Everybody, this is, uh... Mr. French, I'm gonna call this special meeting of the Humboldt County Board of Commissioners to order. This is Monday, January 24th, 2022. Would you please join me in this pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice, for all.
Hey, item three, which is a public comment. Public comment is designated for discussion only, and the public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on this agenda. Do we have any public comment? Not hearing any public comment. We're move on to item four, which is, let's see.
We're gonna move to item five.
Right, item five. For those of you just got here, we're got kind of a abbreviated schedule here that has to do with the availability of some of the folks are gonna present today. So, item five would be Andy Heiser. And look at there.
Morning.
Morning, Andy. You're on.
Andy Heiser, Humboldt County Assessor for the Records. So, I just have a few things I'd like to bring you guys up to date on. The number one first thing, I guess, was the GSA vendor that we went into contract with about a year and a half ago, and that's for our new CAMA system. As of today, the conversion's going really smoothly. The data's coming in clean. I've had some, two real big concerns. Obviously, we tried this once before, and it didn't work out, so I knew kind of where some of our data was gonna have issues as far as the conversion goes. And the top one was our sales. Our Recorder's Office repeats document numbers, and there's a few other counties that do that, and for some reason, these companies have an issue with those repeat document numbers and the data coming in. After one 45-minute meeting with them, they had it cleaned up. It looks really good. I still have, obviously, more to check, but it's a night-and-day difference between the previous conversion that we tried and our current conversion. So, pretty happy with that. The business license went live in the Clerk's Office. They're working on the permitting system. I sit in as many meetings as I can to make sure I'm holding them accountable. Do you guys have any questions specifically on it? We're set to go live June 30th or July 1st. The last conversation I had, they are, we're pretty much gonna close out ADS's year, which is our current costing system. We're gonna close that out, bill, and it might be a mock bill out of that system. And then we're also gonna close out in GSA, and then we'll have matching numbers to, we'll have numbers to match up with, and then we'll proceed from there in GSA, go live for the 23-24 costing year.
Great. It was a long time coming, wasn't it?
Yeah. I was talking to Rona, the Treasurer, and we started in 2017 before I was here with that devnet conversion. And so, it's been five years of working through this, but I think we're gonna have it licked here shortly, I hope.
Great, great. That's good news.
Give it some time, won't it? Yes, it will. And every time we meet with them, they, you know, add a new feature that, most of it is GIS stuff. Most of it's stuff that I can compile data in my system that it takes me hours to do right now in spreadsheets, and I'll be able to just jump in, run a couple queries, and have data. So, it's really gonna benefit our office moving forward as well, bring us to the new centuries.
No more horse and buggy.
No more horse and buggy, even though that's not a bad thing sometimes. The next update is, you guys also allowed me to digitize all of our documents. We have three huge file cabinets that every time we needed to help, we'd have to go to the file cabinet, pull the documents. We'd also spend time filing these documents in those file folders. So, we're gonna digitize. We did, that's 50% complete as of the end of last month, getting everything scanned in, and that's gonna just benefit our workflow. Now, we just can go through the computer and find the documents. If someone calls and says, hey, what happened? You know, the historical stuff, we'll be able to pull all those documents up, view them right by our computer. GSA also has a feature that we can link all those to the parcels. That's internal link only, so we'll be able to be in that parcel, helping a taxpayer, click on the link, view all the documents, be able to run them through the history, and it's gonna save us time and, obviously, money from printing and filing and stuff like that. So, that, that, they've taken all the staples out, they've prepped all the documents, and now they're 50% completion, so we should be here in the next couple months, be fully completed with that project as well.
That saves a lot of time for the customer, too, as well as the year off.
Yeah, yes, probably more for the need of us helping the taxpayer, so we don't have to put them on hold and, or, you know, go get those. We can get them, we can email them. It's all, it's all right there. So, if someone, if realtors call, lenders call, you know, we get a lot of calls that say, hey, we need some history on this, and we'll just be able to process that request and email it out right away.
Great, great.
Will you be destroying all the old records or keep them?
So, most of those records are in our system. They're just a paper form. All the pictures and historical, we have some really cool documents that, drawings and different stuff like that. I didn't let those, I didn't let those leave my office. I think it was last year during budget that I presented, I'm making a binder of all the old historical records we have compiled in this office, and it'll just be cool for people to look at, but anything like that I've kept.
Good.
Yeah, I think that's pretty important to have that historical documents archived someplace. You know, it's, I think back on some of the stuff that came out of Endow, you know, that came out years and years and years ago, going all the way back before Endow was an agency, and had a, they digitized a lot of that, those documents and ended up burning all of those, those old boxes and boxes of those old historical documents. I just, photos especially are just invaluable, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great.
Okay, and then the last update was just on our, my technology front with, you know, I know I've been up here a few times in front of you guys. We, Dave and I met on Friday to have some further discussions on it. I do have some concerns still with where we're at. I understand we lost our technology manager, so we're in a, I mean, anytime you lose, even when Jeff retired, my office was in a little bit of a hurt, and I understand that. So, like I said, Mr. Mindiola, County Manager Mindiola, and I met on Friday. He brought me up to speed on some of the things that they're looking at as far as hires. I put in my initial update that I was curious if there would be any kind of consulting outreach on this, which we are doing already. I just wanna make sure our data's backed up. That's my main concern. We did have a loss. We had one again last September. I'm waiting for the consultant that I met with two weeks ago to get back to me on how long our backups are being done, where it's being stored. But when we were still having some issues with that, and that's just, it's, I've spent a lot of time addressing some of these things, and so I just wanna bring it to light that we're still working through some of this between my department and Technology Service, but I do have a little bit of a concern still, and hopefully, we can shore that up with some of these new hires.
So, the, your level of concern is that about, about the backup itself or the location of the data, continuity of employees? What do you, how can we help you with that? I guess is where I'm...
I don't know enough, really. Part of my concern was, yes, the time or the length that I would get answers back from, and that was with the previous service manager who doesn't work here anymore. So, I understand that. My main concern is just the backups. So, we were supposed to have 28 days worth of backups, and we're supposed to be able to maintain that. And anytime we've asked for that or we've had a data loss issue, we've never received that full 28-day backup. We've always gotten two weeks back. So, when we find an issue and we have one, and we need to reset back 20 days to say, okay, let's go back 20 days, find that data and bring it forward, and continue to work through that, we don't have that. So, we, the data loss or data change, whatever you wanna call it, we can't go back to reset it to a good, solid backup as of yet. And like I said, I know we're working with a consultant right now, and he's, I've met with him. He seems like a really smart guy, but it's not my forte, so I don't really know
Yeah.
the complete length, the extent of all of it. So, he's gonna meet with me. I don't know if he's gonna meet with me, but he talked to Mr. Mindiola about it and said he has some options on ways we can proceed forward. So, I, you know, I'm hoping, I know he's busy as well, but where I'm hoping we can get that solidified, so I can just not worry about this.
Well, you know, when we had that experience, that last data loss, that, I mean, that's a big enough deal to any county that, you know, we, I thought we were headed down the road to actually shoring that up in the future, and I think that's something we probably wanna get on an agenda down the road to make sure that we are, we're headed the right direction on that and that we do have adequate security in place for the, for that data. I don't know when we do that down the road or what, how, what that's supposed to look like, but it appears to me that we're not quite there yet, and I wanna make sure we get there, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola. So, you know, as usual, there's a lot of reasons why this has never been fully put to bed yet. Tim did put a lot of work in on it. I know he and I had several discussions before he departed. You know, part of it was, we're down two full-time people, now he's gone. Whatever solutions he had, he did not impart to others. So, but we do have a handle on it. The consultant, which is N3 is the name of the company, Northern Nevada Networks is what that stands for. They've met with Andy, as Andy mentioned. He's met with Rick and myself, and so this gentleman has a tremendous amount of experience. He knows exactly what the issue is. He, right now, we've kinda made, I told Andy this on Friday, we've made the priority right now is our overall network, 'cause I have a few concerns about the overall network and some of the things that didn't get done before Tim left. And again, not necessarily any fault of Tim's, just, again, it was getting the right equipment in in time, and that took forever because of all the delays and COVID. And then, once we got it in, you know, there was just a lot of work that needed to be done to actually program like these new firewalls on our network. So, there was, there's just a lot of reasons. In the end, there's no excuse other than to say, there was a lot of work on it, it just didn't get finished. And now with the consultant, we've made our number one priority, I told Andy this, was to get this network, our, get our firewalls up that have been here for a while, get them online, because we really needed to update those. And we're probably gonna do, I don't know if it'll be next weekend or the weekend after, it'll be a whole weekend, we bring the whole team in and the consultants, get all that done. Once that's completed and we work out all the bugs, make sure everything's going, then we're gonna turn our attention to Andy at that point in time. Okay, so, again, so it's, it's an ongoing process. Certainly, there's challenges with employees and all kinds of things, but we're gonna get there one way or the other.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what I reiterated, is I don't, I don't wanna go anywhere. I don't wanna spend money that's not needed. We're, you know, I am, you guys approved the $37,000 every year for me to hire GSA, our new CAMA vendor, to maintain our network and our backups with them. I'd love to not pay that every year, and I think if we can get to that point where I feel comfortable, I'd love to turn that back over to the county, so I don't have to pay that. But with that money, I am spending that out of technology every year, and depending on what may happen, I may have to roll things into my general fund that I normally wouldn't or pass up on things, which is fine. I mean, the, my, the data is my number one concern, is we do a lot of work in my office, and we just, we, I don't wanna repeat work.
Any questions for Andy?
Okay.
Great.
What's that?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to item six then, which is update on the Humboldt County courtroom and entry remodel, and Angela Hansen. So, I'm CTA, and what do you have for us?
Appreciate your time.
Let me pass those out.
Wanted to come before you this morning and just provide an update on the courtroom remodel project and entry project. What Dave Mindiola is handing out to you are a series of diagrams and images that encapsulate the previously submitted engineering report that we produced in December. We'll walk through kind of the stages of what we're touching and remodeling within the building, talk a little bit about expanded scope, and then some phasing and updated costs for you. So, that was what was in essence in that engineering report back in December. And so, the first three pages in your handout go together. The, this first page is the second floor, floor plate of the courtroom, or of the courthouse, the 1970s edition. And in December, we had our architects and our engineers, electrical and mechanical engineers down to go through your systems as well as your spaces to identify what is the full extent of the remodel project. And so, you can see that in some regards, there's been some expansion and some movement in the remodel project that is due to additional requirements, state requirements for juries in the courtrooms, as well as then accommodating security upgrades and accessibility concerns and upgrades there. So, we'll just walk through this. If you wanna start in the jury deliberation room, the discussion there has been to take those two existing jury rooms, or restrooms, and turn them into one ADA-accessible restroom. And then, in the adjacent deliberation area for the juries, updating that with an additional little coffee bar. We'll be required to make some ceiling modifications to address some of the plumbing modifications for the restroom facility that will touch the area adjacent to that jury deliberation room. Then, the next area, area two, which is the small district courtroom, that's the area in green there. There was discussion at our last meeting with the judges as to the extent of interior finishes and upgrades. Where do you start and stop this project? And so, we've identified that we would update the interior finishes to that small district courtroom, along with upgrading the mechanical and electrical needs in that room as well. In doing so, that will mean that we'll have to do some ceiling work in that room in order to access the mechanical and electrical equipment that's in that ceiling space. The next area that we're looking at for remodel is the justice courts, and that is approximately 2,400 square feet. The requirement there has expanded a little bit in terms of the number of jurors that are required for those proceedings in justice court. And so, we've expanded that to a 14-person jury box, so that increases the area that we'll be touching there. It also will increase the jury deliberation room area, require us to upgrade the ADA restroom that's associated with that jury deliberation room, and then also including, upgrading the mechanical and electrical systems for the justice court. Again, in doing that, it will require us to do some modifications in the ceiling, and we will need to also look at some of the spaces on the first floor to address the upgrades in the justice court. The fourth area, we were asked to work to address some of the safety concerns and the interaction between the judges and the jurors and the public. And so, we've proposed, in conjunction with the district court, to provide a new enclosed exit stair. So, you'll see that as item, as the yellow item there. That gets the judge and staff out of the building without having to go through the public hallways at any point. And so, it would be exiting from the second floor down a stair tower to exterior grade. The fifth item is the district courtroom itself. It's a 1,700-square-foot upgrade. It addresses the district court accessibility issues that are currently there. It upgrades existing finishes within the room and also addresses the mechanical and electrical modifications that would be required to accommodate all of the current systems. The one item that stays that would be too extensive is the electrical rooms that are currently behind the judge's bench. We looked at that, and because that is kind of the primary hub for your, all of your electrical in that area, it would be too extensive to reroute that, so we think we can keep that right where it's at and not have to touch it. There would be some panels that would be upgraded there, but you wouldn't have to be rewiring or reworking that wiring. Item six is the public hallways. Again, it became a question of, at what point do you stop and start this remodel and transition areas? And it was recommended that we go ahead and finish out the entirety of the public hallways, so upgrading that with paint and carpets or finishes, new finishes. Item seven is addressing the public restrooms. Again, the accessibility issue of the public restrooms. We would take the existing janitor's closet that is at the end of that hallway there and a portion of the adjacent stairwell and upgrade to an additional ADA-accessible public restroom. The last item is item eight, which addresses the entry and foyer lobby area. Looking at the mechanical system, there's been some deferred maintenance issues that have not been addressed, and a portion of that affects the entry area. And so, in order to update the mechanical systems in the foyer area, there would be some modifications to the foyer as well and the ceiling and such to work on those mechanical systems. So, that's the second-story floor plate. Again, as we're upgrading mechanical and electrical systems, there are some areas on the first floor then that end up being necessary to tearing the ceilings and walls and such, and your second page there addresses those areas that are directly below each one of the spaces from the second story. So, again, for example, in the jury deliberation room, because there's some ceiling modifications and accommodating plumbing and that sort of thing and all that, plumbing goes to the first floor, there's gonna be some rework on the first floor as well. The mechanical and electrical upgrades in the foyer and in the entry area, again, would require us touching that first-floor ceiling area as well. And then, probably the biggest one is the primary mechanical and plumbing chase that's on the first floor. We tear into that as well to address some of those upgrades. And then, the basement also gets touched as well. There's some items, deficient items in the basement that we would need to address as a part of the mechanical upgrades, which would be primarily upgrading the backflow preventers for both the fire protection system and the plumbing system. And then, in the mechanical boiler rooms, there's some upgrades that would occur in the basement as well to address the new boilers and mechanical systems. I'll pause and ask if there's any questions about any of that.
How many questions?
So, I guess we have one of the justice court, and now the requirement that there be room for juries, or we have juries, kind of 12-person jury?
Correct. Yeah, the change has gone to 12 plus one alternate, so it's really 13. I think we put down 14.
Right.
I don't know, maybe the diagram doesn't do it justice, it just doesn't seem like it's gonna be big enough of a jury and public, well, to be able to...
Correct, yeah. So, the diagram is a little bit deceiving. You are correct. It doesn't fully encapsulate the full story there. We have laid it out. It is tight, but you can make it work, so. Yes.
With regard to the, to the stair enclosure or the exit?
Yes.
Do we have to comply with ADA standards for that, for those, is that a set of stairs? Are we looking at a, at an elevator or what?
It's a set of stairs at this point. I don't believe that the ADA requirement at this point is necessary, and that gets you into a whole other level of security.
Yeah, yeah, it's not gonna be a public access.
Correct, it's, yeah.
Okay.
It's a controlled access point, basically.
Okay. Any other questions?
You know, on the small district courtroom, what's...
Small district courtroom handles, and Mike, we better off tell me, handles a lot of the children cases and, what do we call those, 232s?
Yeah, so, we, we use, it's used for a little bit of everything. County manager is referring to child welfare cases when the big courtroom is not being used. We have the, which are the child welfare, the foster kid cases, where kids are removed more than being assisted by Division Child Family Services. All of our juvenile delinquency cases when the big courtroom is being used, and we have a master, courtmaster handling either those 432B cases, juvenile, traffic juvenile, criminal delinquency matters, habitual truant matters, all of our child support. Master Rita Fowler comes in at least once a month. We have weeks, last week, we ran child support hearings each day, Tuesday through Thursday, all day long. That was in that small courtroom, and we were running our other juvenile and district court items in the district courtroom. We also have senior judges coming in, handling where there's a conflict. This fall, we had senior judges coming in to, for settlement purposes or for actually sitting on cases while the district court was being used by Judge Montero or another judge. So, it's, it's used a great deal.
Mr. Chair.
This is Commissioner Haas. Appreciate what you did, really.
Appreciate what you did, really. I really appreciate this. And we kind of opened up a big, big can of worms when it came to the courthouse in itself with mechanical. There isn't a whole lot in here that we don't have to change just to have the courthouse, much less just to go to a remodel in the judge's area. What's your thoughts on that? I mean, you know, should that be done first before everything else is touched so that we have heating and cooling and fire protection and air and everything else that we've been needing for a long time?
Sure. So a couple of responses there. In the original report that we did, we gave you three different options. So there's three levels of mechanical upgrades that you can technically do. Now, we would suggest and are strongly advised that you look at the 30-year option, which is to really redo the system in full. In doing that, you're going to be working simultaneously because of the amount of construction that you're going to have to open up walls to get to things and ceilings to get to things. So it's really a, it's not an either-or sort of scenario, I guess I would say. It's you're doing it to get, you're doing it at the same time.
Okay, well, the federal government and people that want to go green in the United States are not going to give us gas. And you have put in here that it's all-natural gas that you're going to use and what's already being used. What would be used as an alternative?
So I'm not a mechanical engineer, but our mechanical engineer, Tim Johnson, is on the phone, on the team's call. Tim, do you want to answer that question?
Good morning. I guess I hadn't heard that the federal government wasn't allowing natural gas, but we could find alternatives to that. There's, I mean, if we did have to do electric resistance, that can be done, but we'd have to look at the electrical service size. Some of the other options are heat pumps. I know the facility staff doesn't like the split systems. It sounds like they're a little bit harder to maintain, but that is an option of your type of system. We could do a heat pump for the entire building that way. But yeah, there are plenty of options. So if we need to go all-electric, we can do that.
It's something that we may have to take a hard look at. I know that California is no longer going to have natural gas going to new buildings or new homes. So there's a connotation between, you know, the gas in our cars, oil, the diesel, natural gas. They're looking at getting rid of all those. So that's one thing, you know, I did pick up on. Thank you.
That definitely is a trend. And when you look at the carbon impacts right now, the electric grid still isn't quite clean enough for it to make a lot of sense right now. But if we are looking at it from a carbon perspective over the next 15 years, that may make sense to shift towards electric.
So I guess we can move on to item seven, which is an update on the other capital projects.
Okay.
So what do you have for us on that?
So on the other capital projects, the entry, the exterior entry upgrade, which included reworking the ramp, we have not started that project. We were holding off to see where this landed. Our intent was to move forward this spring with that because it's a shorter design process time and that's, you know, we didn't need to start that simultaneously with this one. The other project is the facility and grounds shop. It's under our scope as well. And again, we were pushing that out until we got further down the road on this project. So we have not started those two projects yet.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I jump in here? So this item was really centered around several fronts, not just the capital projects that Angela just mentioned, the buildings and ground shop, but also our public safety radio communication system, Phase Two up in the northern part of the county. That's one that in the budget hearings last year, the commission put aside $500,000 for that, for the northern part of the county. And again, because of the same old story, COVID materials, costs, all those things, those things have almost doubled in price. So we're looking at McDermott. The commission about a month ago approved Honeywell to do the civil work up there on that site. And so that is, I don't believe that's started yet, but we're just kind of waiting for the ground to unfreeze before we start doing that. But what we'd like to do because of these costs, there's several considerations there, and then I'll come back to this other stuff. So we've got a tower we've already purchased. We got it at a pretty decent price because we got it, you know, before all these things hit. But we've got radios. The actual radios that we need to improve that northern coverage are available right now. There's going to be a price increase. We were just rumored it was going to be February sometime. Actually, on Thursday, we got the actual word that February 1, there will be a price increase, which will cost us an additional $27,000 if we don't get that in before the February 1 deadline. So that's one of the things I wanted to ask for. The other thing is the shelter alone is going to cost $400,000. That is a combination of the cost of the shelter and the actual transportation. Mike Shepard has worked with MAGA Trucking. It was going to cost us, going with MAGA, they're going to pick it up, bring it here, hold it for us, and then take it up to the site when we're ready for it. That'll save us about another $25,000 or $30,000. So what I'm asking and what I'm recommending is that the commission allow us to move forward on the McDermott site primarily. And it's, the work needs to be done there because of that high tower up there gives us the ability finally to hit off of Eagle Creek and Double H and all the others to improve that coverage up there. Right now, it's pretty detrimental. Our northern deputies have a heck of a time, you know, emergency services. Once they get up there, it's catch-as-catch-can, depending upon where you are. This new McDermott tower will, it'll be a big change for us, big opportunity to improve that system. So because of our holdups with the BLM on Eagle Creek, we're still waiting for full confirmation on categorical exclusion and Double H and all that. Those are going to be late. There's just no way around it. So what we'd like to do is go ahead and get that radio equipment, get the shelter ordered, get it out here, try to get this thing up. At this point in time, it's highly unlikely we'll get it done by June 30, which would be the end of this current fiscal cycle. But what I'd like to do is move on those fronts, get that done, save us some money on the costs. And since we're not, you know, it was originally going to be $3 million for the courtroom remodel. That's gone up to $6 million, which we didn't talk about. So I, we're not, and we're going to be able to have to do that over three fiscal years. So kind of like the public safety thing, it's going to be over time. So we'd like to get that part done because we can get all the equipment in up there on the north and improve that system by 50%, 60% effectiveness immediately. And then when we can go back and finish the towers on Eagle Creek and Double H, that will improve even better at that point in time. So that's what we're asking for on that front. The other piece of that that I wanted to talk about was, like I say, the fact that on the other part here, the other equipment, the, or the other projects, you know, they're all going to take a long time just because of availability of construction workers, materials, all of those same issues. So what I'd like to do is to be able to inch a little bit forward while we can, continue to do a little bit of work towards that end goal of getting all those projects done. And it's, like I said, it'd be, if we could just focus on one project, get it done and move forward. But again, this one right here alone that we're talking about with the courtrooms and the entryway is going to take us a good two and a half years anyway to do it. And I would just hate to put everything else on hold until we finish that. Not to mention the cost, but the fact that we're not going to be able to extend that communication capability up north. So that's what we're asking for on that. And there was another piece that I wanted to, oh, I talked about. Now, the concern is always, and I know Commissioner Cherry and I talked a lot about it, was, you know, not getting carried away and doing too many projects and overspending what we may have available. And Gina and I have talked about it. We've got, again, around $5 million in the current budget in different funds to do these projects. Most likely because we won't be able to do it by June 30, we would not have to move any money, I think. But it could happen if we were lucky and we got the shelter in and the hardware came in and we got everything done, then she would probably have to potentially do an augmentation. But again, we wouldn't go over the original amount that we set aside for all these projects by any stretch of the imagination. I hope that makes sense.
I think so. You know, my, for today, I think what we're looking at is setting the priorities for what we're going to do first, I guess. I think we all agreed that the public communication system that we embarked on here, what, almost seven years ago? We started that. We need to complete that project. The need for that hasn't changed. And I think we need to leave this, my view, I think we need to leave the decision-making firmly in the hands of the county manager and Rick Rantham in terms of how we sequence this together. Anything we can do right now to place dollars out on the table to purchase assets is going to benefit us in the long term. I mean, I just, I think all we have to do is look at the cost estimate for that courtroom and how that changed in the last year. And that, that's not going to change. You know, that trajectory is headed this direction and it's not going to change. It's $6 million now and it's going to go, and likely before we get to the point where we drive a stake in the heart of this project, that it's going to be a lot higher than that. I think from that standpoint, it has to be, we have to recognize those projects which were not wants, but were needs. And the courtroom is obviously, is definitely a need and it's not something we have a choice on. And I think our choices are trying to make sure that we get this thing built in a timely manner so that we can reduce the cost back to the taxpayers. So from a standpoint, that standpoint, Dave, I'm guessing you're looking for an action on the part of the board with regard to the sequencing on the communication system?
Right. And what I'm asking for is just that you allow us to spend up to an additional $1 million for that McDermott site. If we can get the Eagle Creek civil work done, what we're doing is just shaving off the top of the mountain there to make it flat and even and safer for everybody to access it. We'll get that done, but I don't, again, that will have to wait. The most important thing is getting the McDermott site up and getting that equipment installed at the current site at Eagle Creek and Double H to make that system optimized.
And so that, just for the, I think for the record, that $1 million is found elsewhere in our budget in terms of, in terms of the communication system. And it's just a matter of consolidating those needs right now and actually building it in the location where we're going to get the best bang for the buck.
Right.
Dave, Commissioner Haas. All right, so we've got a tower that we're working on in McDermott.
Yes.
And you mentioned two or three other sites.
Right.
Are we going to need extra money for that or is that included in what you're asking for today to complete it? Or are you just going to complete the McDermott one?
Just the McDermott one. Yeah, no, those will be additional costs because on those two sites, Eagle Creek will be a brand-new tower site. We've got an old building that's, you know, really not worthy of holding what it holds currently. It needs to be replaced. We've known that for at least the whole time I've been here. Double H is essentially a Connex box is our shelter that we've used. The good news about that is it will, it's going to cost a lot less because there'll be no civil work needed. We've got the land flattened. It's ready to go. We're just going to take the Connex box out, put a real shelter in, and that'll be a lot less costly. We already have a tower there. That will be improved. The tower will be improved, but that site's going to be a lot less expensive. But those, they're not included in the money I'm talking about here. That'll come a couple of years down the road, probably.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So do I understand you right, Dave, that if we do complete the McDermott site, that will improve the capabilities up there without, even if we can't get to the Eagle Creek and Double H site right now?
Correct.
Gain something, right?
We are. And so that's the key is, you know, we're, it's really the new system is centric around microwave capability, being able to share that data among all these sites. And currently, we really, we don't do that. Rick, if you want to come up and maybe give a more technical explanation of this. But essentially, right now, we don't have the ability without that McDermott site to do what we need to do. And Rick can give you the technical description of that.
Good morning, Rick Rantham, Humboldt County Technology. Yes. So just finishing the McDermott site is not completing the entire system, but it will give us the ability to activate one channel once the building is set, to put in there to get at least one channel live for the wide-area channels. It is very critical that with the new radios, that that whole system works as one unit. Also with that site, it is going to be branching off to what we call Blue Mountain and Buckskyan, to get our high-level sites operational for this summer, hopefully by the end of the summer. So it is a key piece of the puzzle for the whole project. We're going to use Eagle Creek and McDermott as-is. We're just going to put radios in there, turn one channel on. And then once we change the high-level sites out with the new frequencies, then we're able to turn on the lower sites with all the extra channels that we have for wide area. But we cannot do that until we piece all this thing together. And the one piece is finish McDermott, get that connected, get it operational, which is not 100% of the rest of the system, but we'll get it operational. Get at least one channel on the air for the deputies up north to handle the impact on the traffic. And then turn around and turn on the, or change out the high-level sites to what has already been licensed for and get those things turned on. And then we can continue with the lower valley channels and sites.
Do you expect to have the upper sites done this year or in this? Yeah, well, I've got to ask the question.
Yes. That is one of the projects to do for us this summer. Again, it's availability, the big purchase of the radios, getting them here onsite so we can actually implement this equipment in there. We will have to visit each site and spend a week on each site to do some upgrades at each site for the equipment to work.
And with the loss of personnel that you have? It is, it's just, I know that they need to be done. I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, you combine this. Another question for you, Dave. We spent $350,000 of the $500,000 so far.
Right.
So you've got 150 left in that one.
Correct.
So you're going to need 650 to finish to the million altogether. You've got 150, you'll need another 500,000.
Well, I'm actually saying I need another million in addition to the 150 that's remaining in the current. So, and again, it's about $675,000 for the radios, which again, gives us everything we need for all the sites. And that's the biggest hit right there. The shelter's 400,000. So those two are pretty big.
Do this, Commissioner Hill, do the deputies have communication up there right now or they're using the old technology?
They're using the old sites, yes. We tried turning on at least the Bravo channel the other day, but we got some more kinks we have to work on. But the big idea is the purchase of these new radios, the 9100s that we're using now are end of life. They're supporting what parts they have left. So the new series of doing the mixed system of what we call multicast, simulcast, we have to go to the new versions of the radio. So getting that hardware here, like Dave mentioned earlier, February So getting that hardware here, like Dave mentioned earlier, February 1st, there's going to be a 5% increase. That's $27,000,000. And then they're talking about another 5% this summer. Everything seems to be going up across the board. It's... Don't understand why, but it is. It's getting out of control.
Yeah. I think for purposes of the two newer commissioners, what we're talking about with Eagle Creek and the upper sites you were talking about, as well as the McDermott site, that's all part of the communications plan that we approved going back seven, eight years ago now. And this has been incredible. We've just... Because it was such a big project to bite off, you know, we renewed what we... We had dead spots. We had the inability for agencies, whether it be the Sheriff's Department or Fire or whatnot, to talk one another. And we had dead spots within the county. So this has been a process that we've been through in the middle of now to try to stitch all this together with some technology that's going to meet those needs. And this is just part of that. It's a... I think ultimately, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think ultimately what we're talking about today, doing today, is shifting from Eagle Creek, or at least shifting from the... Where we were before in the sequencing to McDermott, take advantage of the tower we have in McDermott we've already purchased and the radios that we tried to purchase prior to the 5% price increases to come up and actually put that segment of the system together so that we can get that hub going on that upper corner of the county.
Yes.
That's nothing new in terms of...
Right.
You know, that's not a new project to us. That's just... That's shifting it a little bit in order to take advantage of some cost benefit.
Because of scheduling, yes. Still waiting for the BLM.
Yeah.
And Phase 2 did incorporate all the low valleys and the high-level sites, Trident, Blue Mountain, Buckskin, trying to add an additional New York, which would cover over there by Pearl Camp and that area and stuff like that.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think that this is a good example when we approved these to make the improvements on the communication systems here, what these capital improvements can turn into. I mean, this thing turned into an elephant. It's costing a lot more, I think, than any of us expected it to do. So, you know, with these other projects, they're going to cost more than we expect them to do, too. But question, Rick, too, is we spend, you know, a million and a half up there. Is it going to help anyone other than Sheriff's Department? Will it help the local rural fire departments right now?
By the completion of Phase 2, yes. There's going to be a tactical channel at Eagle Creek and a tactical channel at Double H.
Not till we get those done, though.
Correct. I just don't have the space on the towers and everything else with the existing sites the way they are. So I have to pick and choose which is going to be the priority. We went with law enforcement because EMS uses it, BIA uses it, and all law enforcement up north.
So it'll help EMS?
I'm sorry?
It'll help EMS.
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions? We need a motion for authorization to proceed with the McDermott-Eagle Creek sites as presented.
Correct. So move.
Okay.
Do we need to put a dollar amount on that?
Yeah, I would say let's just put $1 million on it. Make sure we put a tag on it.
Not to exceed a million?
Not to exceed a million.
We'll work around that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Rick. Appreciate it. With regard to Angela, I think we're... You've pretty much given us the track that we're going to be heading down. We just have to figure out how we're going to finance it as we go. But...
Can I have one more question on engineering and architect? Does that replace the elevator, too?
No, it does not touch the elevator.
It does not? We're going to keep the same elevator where it is?
Correct. Yep. So just to note on the kind of the financing side of things, so...
Yes. Thank you.
The schedule side of it, you know, you're not biting off that full $6 million in one year.
Right.
You're covering that over two or three cycles.
Right.
Because just a timing for design and construction and all of that, so...
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's what we did with the communications program, and that's pretty much... Unless we have a palette for long-term financing of those types of projects, which I don't think we do, we're fixed. We're going to pay as you go. And so I look forward to working with you. Thank you for coming down here for this.
Absolutely. It's our pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add one other thing to that I meant to mention. I think I said it in the staff report that I did have been working with Judge Montero. And of course, the 60 District has a ending fund balance that's very healthy, that they've accumulated over the last seven years or so. And originally, we were talking about them putting in $400,000 or so, but he has committed to $3 million of his ending fund balance toward this project. So while it's gone up in its cost, the original $3 million that this commission approved for this project, at least that $3 million, we've got it covered with the Judge Montero's dollars because it's going to have a big effect on his area as well, so...
Okay.
What do you see as an outside date when the project could be completed?
Outside date? So design will go for the next nine months if everything comes into alignment. And that depends on the design team and feedback and the back and forth through that process. But nine months there, we're looking at fall timeframe for bidding. So come back before you all to approve for it to go out to bid with a fall date on it. You'd have a winter transition. So in terms of phasing, our recommendation is that you remove all of your staff and the courts out into temporary facilities through the late fall, early winter. And then demolition and construction would start '23, so winter of '23, and you're probably a good year on that. So you're really looking at 2024 before you'd be back in the facilities.
Late '24?
Mid-'24, mid to late, yeah. And that's if we can get all the construction lined up, and that's the contractors.
If you're a betting man, I'll bet with you.
That's a big if. That's a big if. I guess one of the logistical questions that I had for Dave has to do with that transitional site that we're going to need to move the courts to while we're in the process of building over here. And that site is, are we thinking about utilizing that piece of ground over there that vacant house is sitting on right now?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Dave Mendiola. So what we're thinking about doing is, and we're going to come back to you probably February 7th, if not the second meeting in February, is to ask you a couple of questions. One would be, take that site, 537 Malarki Street, I think is the address on that. That's the building that's closest to the courthouse here. That thing was unoccupied starting last December, I think it was. The renter that was there for many, many years left. And that house is much like the Hubbard, but even worse. It has to come down. And so what we would like to recommend to you is that we go ahead and do the asbestos assessment mitigation and then do the demolition of that. And then that will set us up for temporary housing. We've already got sewer there. We've got water there. We've got everything we need, so that will save us some money there. And then the plan is to come up... We're already talking with a couple of companies on that front that would supply temporary housing. And we can configure it so that the courts will be able to utilize it as both a courtroom and their offices and the like. And we'll move both district and justice courts over there. And again, that, depending upon the timeframe, probably early 2023, something like that, they would move over there until the construction was completed over here. And that's the plan. And then that's part of what I want to bring to you, just get your approval for the asbestos and mitigation and the demolition. And then also want to talk to you about where do we want to put the buildings and grounds building? We've talked about up at the shop area with the Quonset huts. There are some considerations you need to be aware of in terms of, you know, the grade up there and the cost of the civil work and some things like that. I see some real pluses with that, but there could also be some negatives. I've been working with Commissioner Hill, Mike Shepard on that, and Angela's team also went up and looked at it. So they've got a sense of what the issues are there. But we're going to bring that back as a separate issue because there's really no reason to do any demolition up there or anything if we're not going to use the site. But Mike Shepard would argue that, no, we really should get rid of those Quonsets because they're a liability. They're a fire hazard. They're not being used for anything. And what you saw, we spent $100,000 just to get the vets a place to stay. That's what the cost was to get that up to a decent level. So anyway, I want to bring those back to you, and you can talk about those separately as to how you want to go forward on that.
Mr. Chairman, follow-up question to that. And I had been envisioning that temporary housing would go for the courts. Is that money included in the $6 million, or is that over and above?
That's over and above.
Got any kind of idea on numbers on that?
I threw a number out in talking with Mike. It'd be about a half a million dollars for that year and a half, two years.
I was going to ask that question, too. And has there consideration been given as far as if we set up some Quonset huts for the various courts, how the security is going to work on something like that? Do they feel comfortable that they can handle the security part of that?
Well, we've talked about that, and we're going to definitely have to have something that would be a single point of entry because you can't have a bunch of different entry points. And so, which is what the courts have today. But yeah, there would have to be. We'd simply take our current court's security and move over there, so we'd have to have some room to do all that. No question.
And it would be more of those trailers. They put them at schools all the time. They're locked together modular-type houses, and they can build whatever they want out of them. So they're aesthetically pleasing as they can be. You know, they're not a Quonset hut sitting out in our parking lot, but, you know, or like a ski resort that's in temporary setup. You know, they're pretty...
Right.
Pretty... As secure as they could be, you know, as a building, I guess. I just have a comment on this whole remodel thing, if I could. Just, I guess, to be transparent, I mean, that's great news that the judge is going to step up with some more funding, committing to some more funding. I mean, that was five times what he originally agreed to. You know, this thing has turned into an animal. I'm sure you guys all saw the packet of over $6 million for this project that we slated for possibly $3 million. But, you know, with that and construction and where we're going, it's not going to get any cheaper. And finding crews and finding construction companies to do the work, it's not going to get any easier. It's not... The cost is not going to go down. You know, we touched on a lot of it. The mechanical side was a lot more involved than we had originally thought. We're actually doing an overhaul of the whole mechanical and HVAC system, some upgrades to the water and power. So it's a much bigger scope than we originally planned. So, you know, keep that in mind. Just to be transparent with the commission, though, the question was already asked, you know, that doesn't include the temporary housing, so there is going to be some costs with that. There could possibly be some asbestos mitigation in this that could add. You know, we're looking at maybe $10,000 to $15,000 there. So not a super big cost, but transparency, there will be other costs. And as you know, with these projects, what else are we going to run into? So, you know, realistically, that $6 million is probably quite a bit more. I don't know what it looks like, maybe a million more, something like that. But another thing I wanted to bring up in going through this process, and we're getting ready to go into budgeting, is we really need to look at setting aside money for building funds for this so that we have that money set aside for when these projects come up, that we're not... We have the money there. We can say, okay, we need a Buildings and Grounds building. It's $3 million. We have $5 million in this account. Let's just do it. You know, that way, we're not trying to ask for money from other departments and trying to hope for the judge to kick in or this department to kick in. We actually have a building fund set aside. So that's something we really probably need to look at this budget cycle is getting that building fund more established and what we're going to commit to that every year. I think it would make our job as commission and the future commissioners be a lot easier and probably a lot easier on Gina and everybody else. So that's all I have. Look forward to it. I think it'd be a great project, and I really think the time is now to do it versus letting it get any farther and looking at a huge cost of possibly having to build a whole new courthouse or something, you know, which that stuff comes up, and we really need to take care of the buildings that we have.
Yeah, I would just dovetail onto that. Take a look at Lander County, what they ended up doing, and they tried to piecemeal together their historic infrastructure and their old courthouse and whatnot, and they did it for years and years and years and years. And so did we, to be honest with you. It was... There was a lot of deferred maintenance on this building when I first came onto this commission, and that's been a concern of mine for a long, long time. But you look at what happened in Lander County, and they ended up spending almost $30 million for a building. And it just finally got to the point where they just had to...
Which in today's would probably be a $70 million building.
Yeah.
Really.
Yeah.
Or $100 million to build that now.
Yeah.
Lander County, the difference was Lander County had the money. With all the revenues that they get out of the mines, they had a pretty huge... They had a huge ending fund balance. I've always had difficulty... I understand the need to put money in a capital improvement fund, but you've got to have the money. I mean, if you're going backwards and you're taking money and setting aside, you're just going backwards more. If you've got... When your revenues are over your expenditures, then it's easy to do. But it hasn't been that way. And so where do you get the money? You have to take it out of your ending fund balance. And we had... We were at a point where it was getting touch and go whether or not we were going to be able to maintain the services that we have. And, you know, we got close to that $12 million mark where we were going to have to make some reductions. There wasn't the money there to put, in my opinion, to put in the capital improvement fund. Looks like we're getting maybe past that point now, and things are looking a little better. So I would entertain looking at it now, but I just couldn't before.
You know, I think that's a great point, Commissioner. And I think... And we all struggled with that for years, trying to keep that balance together and hold the tax rates down where the expectation for the folks and whatnot. But we just... We're finally reaching a point where the wolf is at the door. We've got projects right now. These aren't want projects. These are need projects. These are projects that have... Should probably have been on our radar 10, 15 years ago. But they're not, and we are where we are. But the bottom line is, is it comes right down to the point where you establish essential services, you establish... You know, you try to keep the wheels on it, so to speak, as we have been. And then at some point in time, just as it was with the diesel tax, you finally have to reach a point where you go, we have to raise revenue in order to do this. And I... It's a chicken bone sideways in my throat to even say that because we've never been interested in that. But that is something we're going to have to really, really wrestle with down the road because we are... As you pointed out, these projects are getting large enough now to where we are literally going to be looking at borrowing the money, or we're going to be looking at some serious reductions in services in order to fund them. And I think we are that... Those are the hard choices we're going to have to make down the road.
And I... Mr. Chairman, I believe, and I may be wrong, that there is some NRS on putting money aside that you have. If you do that and you put too much in there, you have to designate what that is for, what building are you going to build? You just can't put it away for a rainy day.
Yeah, there's a number that you can actually do that with.
But I think we have enough. But I think we have enough projects around. We could probably earmark the money.
Yeah.
I would say that wouldn't be a problem.
So Mr. Chair, I would just add to that, just to kind of round that conversation off to the question of having, you know, the money set aside to yours, Commissioner Hill. We've, we've kind of done that. In the current budget, we have the building reserve fund, which has about $2 million in the sending fund balance. That's money that we've slowly but surely added to. When I first came here, one of the first things Andre said was, he recommended to me was go over to the board and get him to start putting a million dollars aside every year into the building reserve fund. And, and we just couldn't do it for the reasons that Commissioner Cherry mentioned, that it was tough going on revenues for a while. So, but that's one place, we did build it up to 2 million. We've got about half a million dollars in the court assessment fund, which comes from Judge Lovelace, which he has committed to the project. And then we've got the capital projects with that ending fund balance is sitting, you know, one and a half million or 2 million right now. So when you collectively pull all those together, you know, we've got about $5 million that we do have available to spend right now. That's cash in the bank. So, but, and with the judges that puts you up around 8 million. And, but that's money we have now. And then over the course of the next two or three budget cycles, I agree, we, we really need to put some money aside because there's always going to be some need, you know? And so anyway, but I think we're in a really good place. You know, our ending fund balance right now is, well, I haven't seen the final number yet because the auditors are still finishing, but I think we're up around 17 and a half, 18 million is where we're going to end up, which a few years ago we were down around 15 million. But you know, the state only requires that we keep 6% of all expenditures in our ending fund balance. Now we're running about 70 to 80%. So we're in great physical fiscal condition. That's my opinion. I think Gina would back that up. But again, there's always concerns, right? You have to be careful. You don't want to get too cocky about it, but I think we're in a really good place right now.
Any additional comments, concerns, discussion?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody good to move on to the, the next item?
Did we do that? Did we vote on that?
Oh, we did. Yeah, we did.
We did.
Mr. Chair, I think what we're going to do is rather than go into item four, human services, we're waiting till 10 o'clock before Shannon from Churchill County can join us and she's going to do some presentation. We do have Brent Farr here is from Far West Engineering. So why don't we go to item eight?
Okay, we'll move on then to item eight, update on the Grass Valley Preliminary Engineering Report and Request to Expand a Master Plan. Matt, come on up.
Morning.
Good morning. Glad to be with you. Brent Farr, for the record, I'm the president and CEO of Far West Engineering. So Dave, are you going to do your presentation?
Yeah, let me just pull that up.
Okay.
I'm going to do mine first. I even have them numbered.
Nice.
See if I can share this with everybody.
Well, you need to get, build another house, I guess.
Ken, do you have any relatives in Mineral County?
I do. So to see.
Tony?
Well, I know a Tipton out there.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Jerry Tipton, yeah. Yep.
It's neat. It's good.
Yeah, Jesse and I both have a relationship there.
Yep.
Work with, one of my partners is Lucas Tipton, but no, no relation.
No.
He's from a different place.
All right. Mr. Chair, I think I'll start this off here. I've got a little presentation I just want to go through real quickly here and then I'll turn it over to Brent. He's also got David Polley, his chief engineer that's working on this, is on the line. David was sick over the weekend, can't join us in person, but looks like he's on the line. So that's good. He's feeling well enough to do that. So I wanted to give you a little background first. First quarter of 2021, Far West kicked off a preliminary engineering report, which is what it's referred to in the state revolving fund world of funding. And the scope is, it was and is very focused on connecting Star City and Gold Country Water to wastewater treatment facilities. So originally this scope was on this was just to, to extend the city sewer system pipeline to a, somewhere at Star City so that we could eventually, you know, do something with the Star City residents. That was the original idea where this all started. It was quickly looked at after talking to Alicia Heiser that, you know, they originally looked at it and they said, well, you know, I guess we could take on Star City and maybe Gold Country. And then they relooked at it and said, boy, I don't know, it'd be pretty heavy duty to be able to hook that into our system. So we kind of backed off on that and said, and at the same time, the state revolving fund was saying, hey, we got a lot of money to give. You guys, can you expand your project? Do you have another project? They were just begging us for projects. And, and Brent and I spent a lot of time talking to the SRF folks. But so at the same time, myself and the grants coordinator, Rochelle Paquette began researching funding mechanisms. And of course, that was on the heels of COVID and all of a sudden we were hearing of infrastructure funding that was coming along and now that's all hit. So I'm going to go into that here in just a minute and give you a little overview of some of the potential places we can find money. But in the third quarter of 2021, of course, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act and the state of Nevada announced 6.7 billion dollar awards for projects in Nevada. So, so there's a lot of money out there. The state treasurer came out and did a listening tour last fall. Commissioner Tipton, I think, joined us for that. And essentially they were saying, what kind of projects do you have out here? And of course, this was the top of our list. We really have a public safety issue with respect to the nitrates and, and they were very open to that idea. We have not heard back from them. I'll talk more about that here in a minute as to how that's all going to work itself out. But so in the fourth quarter of 2021, Farm West submitted a preliminary drawings of the project area and the cost as part of the preliminary engineering report. And one of the things is we put together Don Calcoski, Betty Lawrence, Jan Morrison from the economic development perspective, and Rochelle Paquette was involved. And again, just to, I wanted to put a team together that could look at everything from easements that we would need to what's the impact from an economic development, of course, all of these companies that could potentially be coming into our community from, you know, West Coast Salmon and Lithium Nevada and those types of things. And so we put this group together and we began talking about what this should look like. And of course, everybody had a different concern. For example, Jan Morrison's concern was about, let's make this a regional project to include Pershing County because of the people that live just beyond the Humboldt County line. Because from a funding and grant perspective, anytime you have a regional project that affects more than one county, you get big numbers. You go way up in the category as far as in a competitive situation for a grant. So we wanted to include that, but in the end we looked at that and said, at this time, that's a bit much. That's a huge project. It'll add a lot of dollars to this thing and it won't impact, won't have the heaviest impact in terms of nitrates. But what we want that to be is part of our long-term goal, which is a master plan, which we'll talk about here in a minute. So, so that was what led to that was, okay, well, if our current preliminary engineering report is just focused on, which you're going to hear about in a second from, from Brent, is just focused on connecting Gold Country, Star City into this sewer system and building a facility, is there any other areas that we can take in? And we did find some additional neighborhoods that we felt was important, including the elementary school and the Mormon church and, you know, some of the bigger ones who use the systems a lot. So we pulled them into it as well. So that's what we wanted to do. But again, the one thing we really think we need to do at this point in time, once you see the overview here of the preliminary engineering report, which is not completely finished, there's a little bit of work to be done, is we'd like to enlarge this effort into a master plan, which in other words will be our long-term plan for Grass Valley. What are we going to do for the whole area so that we have a plan to allow for building of new, you know, homes, businesses and those types of things, should that, the need be there? And we certainly expect the need will be there. So we assembled the team and I mentioned who that was. Several meetings were held to identify impact areas of the project and we talked a little bit about that. Currently, we are talking with two property owners about their specific properties for the actual wastewater treatment facility. And we, again, have just had preliminary discussions about, number one, the availability, number two, the impact that a wastewater treatment facility might have on not only their current property, but those properties that are adjacent to them. And of course, they have concerns about that, rightfully so. And so we also, you know, have begun identifying utility easements and, and those types of things. So I'm just going to, I'm just showing you this overview. We've got a better one on, on Brent's slide presentation to give you an idea, but this, the, the pink areas, you can see from the legend down here, in the far left-hand corner is the potential wastewater treatment facility locations. There's actually two of them, one in, well, actually in purple, there's two different parcels. There's a, that kind of quadrangular one there and then there's the other that sits right on top of it. Those are the two we're looking at there for that. Then there's other areas that we can include as far as the project, all those areas in green potentially. That was kind of an add-on after we started looking at potential areas in phase one that we could, that we could affect. The black area to the right there is some additional properties from Thomas Canyon Road, a little below that, on up to the school and the, the Mormon church there. And, and then of course, the, I guess I'll call it pink is Star City and the blue is Gold Country. Between those two, I believe the total number is around 600 or 700 homes and that would be, have a major impact on nitrates. And that's where our focus will still be. So the preliminary engineering report is very focused. Brent will talk a little bit about that. And it's just focused on this phase one work. The next step is to build a master plan that will expand, expand the PER into a short and long-term plan to mitigate the nitrate issue over the next 15 to 20 years. So the only request I have today on this item, in addition to just answering any questions you have about the PER, which again, we'll get into that after Brent goes through it in more detail, is I am asking for $37,600 that we will add to the master agreement that we have with Far West Engineering. And that will do a couple of things. I'll have Brent talk about that as well. That will include some additional planning with the master plan to expand, what are we going to do long-term to pull in all these other areas, Grass Valley? But also that's for Far West to really assist me in identifying properties, negotiating deals for properties and all of the work that goes into building a project like this. And that's where their expertise is and I, I would really appreciate that with, again, this is the first time I've ever, ever done something like this, so I would love to have their, their backing on, in dealing with these kinds of projects. So let me just quickly go over the funding map, just to give you a sense of where all this money sits. The ARPA funds, which is the bipartisan infrastructure bill that was passed, that was the 6.7 billion that I mentioned that the state received. So we are in a long line of people waiting for that money. And of, and of course, that thing is dominated by state projects that are already in their other budgets. So I'm sure we'll be down the road from them, but that's going to be, we'd, I'd like to think that we can get, if not all of it, maybe a good portion of it, maybe 20 million of the whole project from that source. But we don't know that yet and they haven't put together a, a process by which we, you know, apply and, and go through that process. We don't know what that is yet and we don't know when that'll start. We were told by the treasurer that it would probably be right about the first quarter of 2022. So we're expecting any day now we'll hear about this. State revolving fund, this is a, a place where we've gone to, it essentially helped us build the, the arsenic filtration plant up in McDermott. It's helped us with many projects and all of our different sites on water projects, sewer projects, that's what they're there for. They get grant funding from the federal government and, and so they kind of work with USDA and, and other funding sources to kind of put, help us put packages together. So again, Brent and I are trying to get a meeting with them right now. We, the gentleman that runs that operation, Jason Cooper, will be back tomorrow. So hopefully we'll get a meeting with him in the next week or so to get an update on where we're at and he can help us with how we might put together at least the funding for all the professional services, design work, those kinds of things that we're going to have to do. But they too will receive $71 million annually over the next five years as part of this ARPA funding. So that's a separate pile of money from this 6.7 billion. So that's very exciting and it tells us we've got some more money that we can, they can possibly get us. Now they do everything from general obligation and revenue supported loans, and then they also do loan forgiveness loans, which is what we got at McDermott. So, so we can get loans and, and grants and, and all kinds of things, but we'll be working with Jason to identify what qualifies, what pieces and parts. And, and so hopefully between these two funding sources and then of course, you know, one of the things on principal forgiveness loans, they do require, require a fiscal sustainability plan, which is essentially how are you going, once you build this project, how are you going to sustain it? You know, what kind of revenues are you going to have to pull in? What kind of maintenance do you expect to keep it going and to build out for long-term plans? Those kinds of things. So we'll need to put that together as well and we'll be working on that. And then of course USDA loan grants, they're out there. The only thing with USDA, usually they're the last piece. So if, let's say you've gotten funding from several different sources and you're a couple million short, USD will jump in and it'll be a loan. It's not a grant. And so you have to take that loan out. But again, they're really good, they're very competitive loan rates and you can get them over a 40-year term. So they can be very helpful if you close the deal to make it all happen. And of course, there's always bonding. As you know, Humboldt County has just stayed away from bonding for many, many years and we are doing, I've had one discussion with a law firm that does this kind of work, just to kind of get a sense of what's the process, how long does it take, what kind of costs are involved? We're trying to get our arms around all that as well, so that if we need to go down that road, we can. And then of course, the EDA grant, that's a competitive grant, that's a nationwide grant. Again, as you can see there, the typical award is about $5 million, but it can be up to 10 million. So we'll, we'll look at all of them and that one, again, we'll definitely put in for that if we don't get the money we need from the other sources. So, so once the funding is secured, then the question is, how do we, when do we get started? What are we going to do next? And so then the design work will begin and include selection of location for the wastewater facility, negotiations with landowners to secure the acquisition. And of course, those same funding sources will be used to acquire the land, finalize the impact area and secure additional easements that are necessary and select the type of treatment facility that will be constructed. We're already getting those questions, especially from the property owners. They want to know, what are you going to do with the affluent? You know, once you process it, where's it going to go? And, and so there are some different options with that and we'll look at, we'll look at those as we get down the road in this design process. And again, that will have a big effect on which property we use and how we're trying to protect those other property users around that. So obviously with a project like this, you don't want it to stink too much. I mean, ultimately it will, but you, you want to be very sensitive to that issue. And then of course, we've been talking about Gold Country Water for an acquisition for years in talking with Brent and his team. We really think it's probably a, a key part of that, that we should do that. And again, that will just require funding. And that's one of the other things that we'll have to talk to the state revolving fund about. So there's some real tricks around that one, just because of some of the financials that has to do with Gold Country and the fact that it's privately owned, that creates some challenges. But again, it's one of those things I, I need to get before you here, event, pretty soon probably, and just talk about what's out there. But until we get together with Jason Cooper, we don't know what that funding source will look like. So that will be very important. So, so that's my introduction to the plan and where we are. And then I'll turn it over to Brent to provide the details of the current PER.
Before Brent said started, is any questions, any commissioners have for Dave?
Yes, I have a, maybe a, not a question, but a comment, but the total cost seems a little low to me. Having been on the city council when we did the new wastewater treatment plan out there, if I remember right, that's about what that cost at that time.
Right.
That's been.
I hope you're, I hope you're wrong. That's kind of what we've come, I'll let Brent kind of make comments about that, so.
Dave, on the, the Gold Country Water and acquisition.
How, how is it? That's kind of what we've come, I'll let Brent kind of make comments about that, so.
Dave, on the Gold Country Water, an acquisition? How, how has it been maintained? How, you know, I mean, when you took over the Star City, it was in pretty good shape. So, you know, the county didn't have to lay out a lot of money to bring that up to specs. I'm not sure that this one will be that easy.
Yeah, and that's one of the things we're gonna have to do, we're definitely gonna have to bring in, you know, somebody, Far West potentially, to take a look at that and get a complete assessment of it and an appraisal. That'll be part of any acquisition we have anyway. NRS requires that we get appraisals on it, and when we do an appraisal, that'll give us an idea of what the investment is, and they'll also, usually in those, they'll give us an idea of what the long-term maintenance issue is with that particular system. So yeah, we won't go anywhere with that until we know that.
Does this hinge on acquisition of that gold water? Say we can't come together on a cost involved in that, because I think it's gonna be quite a cost for us to get it up and running where we'd like to be.
Right.
Not just buying a water system.
Right, yeah, no, it does not. I mean, if, whether it's Gold Country, or if they sell it to another private owner, we can coexist without any problem. I don't see any problem for that.
So Dave, if we do this master plan, one of the problems out there is, is I guess, joint or divided governance out there. You've got Pershing County, that this master plan would not pertain, could not pertain to the Pershing County portion, or could it?
Well, I think it could, and one of the things that I want to do is reach out to Pershing County, and because they've got an interest with those property owners that are on the Pershing County side, and see if they'd like to share the cost of the master plan, because we do, we need to mitigate their issue as well.
Right.
So, but I think for now, it's just, you know, we need to, the vast majority of it, 95% is Humboldt County. So I think we just, we need to do that for that purpose, so that we know what our big plan is, and we have a vision going forward, so that if you're all gone, or I'm gone when we get to this, somebody's got a blueprint from which to follow and continue to move forward on it. So that's my goal with that, but I absolutely feel I will be reaching out to Pershing County and asking if they'd like to participate.
Okay, any additional?
We're good. Thank you.
Brent?
Okay. Dave, do you have?
Yep, oh, sorry, forgot. Let me get you set up here.
Well, before I get started, I just wanted to mention how proud we are to be working for the county. We've enjoyed the relationship here and working with Dave, and, you know, we've got a long history of working in rural Nevada and really enjoy it. I don't get a chance to be in front of the commissioners that often, so thank you for the opportunity. David Pulli is on the call here to help if there's any questions as we go along. He's one of our lead engineers in the Elko office that we have, so. So we'll get started here, and Dave, is this, is this sort of casual enough that as we go along, if there's a question, we can address it as we go?
Absolutely.
Or, okay.
You bet, just, when you want.
I don't want to go all the way to the end before, you know, if something catches your attention here, but I think a lot of you are familiar with the history of what's going on out there over time and the longstanding issues related to nitrates. You know, there's been studies going on out there for decades, showing the impact, doing studies of where it's coming from, et cetera. So I don't want to bore you with all those details, but the bottom line is that, you know, there's obviously a need to address some environmental issues in the aquifer in regard to contamination, mostly nitrate contamination, that is from septic systems and other activities in that area out there. As it turns out, we actually worked on a study that the state commissioned, we were their consultant, and they looked at different areas of Nevada and did some nitrate studies and things like that, and so we actually did a study out here where we looked at nitrate levels in the aquifer and, you know, just further studied an issue that over time just progressively became more complicated. The thing about things like nitrate is, of course, you've got two issues going on, you've got time, you know, it takes quite a while for nitrate to become a problem, you know, initially you can have septics out there and not see any results or anything, but over time, that aquifer gets worse, and then it takes time to actually clean it up, too. And so we're at that point now where time has caught up with us, and the density of septic tanks has been an issue, so. Dave, we could advance there. This slide just kind of talks about how we, we didn't, oh, there we go, took a minute.
Took a little bit.
Yeah.
Sorry.
This slide just talks about the state's perspective on the Winnebago Segment and Grass Valley groundwater basins. Little quote here that the state says in a state of, calling this in a state of depletion by the Nevada Division of Water Resources due to the negative impacts of groundwater quality. So the state, you know, has their understanding of what's going on out there. What's kind of interesting is that we did a project like this in Dayton where we had a highly dense area of septic tanks, and really, the only thing that the state will, I guess, enforce is drinking water regulations. And so it's interesting, because if you're out there and you have your own septic and well, and that well produces nitrates of, say, 15, you know, the standard for drinking water is 10, they won't do anything, you know, they won't enforce anything. Now, there are public water wells out there that have been impacted, and so the state will require action on those, so when you get up to close to 10, they're saying, hey, what's your plan? You know, you're gonna have to treat or drill a new well, but you can't provide water to the public that is over the standard. So just kind of FYI, so the state knows what's going on out there, but the only thing that they have really shown regulatory enforcement is on those drinking water wells, which are predominantly Gold Country and Star City. Next slide?
It's working.
Yep. Takes a second.
There you go.
This figure just shows kind of where things are out there, which of course, you all already know. The treatment facility that, you know, that the city owns, we've kind of looked at that. The nearest connection point is about two miles northeast from Grass Valley, so that's one of the alternatives that the PER has looked at, and we'll show that here in a minute. Other than that, there are no, you know, existing sewer facilities out in that area. Next slide. This next slide is entitled Need for the Project, and that's, you know, some of these slide titles come from the PER outline, so the state outline requires us to identify the need for the project, which in this case is fairly straightforward and simple. You know, this slide just talks more about the nitrate issues. When we did that study back in 14, we sent letters out to people, and we got about 134 that let us actually sample, which is pretty amazing. But we started to see sample results in those individual wells over 10 milligrams per liter, and we also have the issues in the groundwater wells at Gold Country. In fact, just kind of had some updated information on that, that they're, they have, their well number two reached a nitrate level of nine in August, so they're kind of, you know, feeling the pinch here, because when they get to, I mean, when they get to 10, they're out of compliance, and so, as it turns out, we just got information that they're most, I guess...
Were those property owners notified of their results individually?
Yes. Yep, they participated, and then so they were given that information. The plan for Gold Country, at least my understanding, is that they have decided to drill a new well, which kind of surprised me, thinking that, you know, they'd be fortunate to find water out there that met the standard, but they did quite an exhaustive study, and apparently have found a location that they're confident in, either location or and/or depth, that will produce water in the range of about 2 milligrams per liter nitrate. And if they do that, that's great, because then what they can do is they can blend with those other two wells, so they can still use the other wells, and then they blend them together and still produce, you know, say, 5, 6 milligrams per liter. So they remain, they still benefit from the capacity in those other two wells. So this slide just kind of shows, you know, graphically, some of the results, and you can see those orange dots above the standard were the ones that we found out there that were well above, I mean, some hitting 25. So it is hit or miss, and we still found some that were quite low, below 5, so it kind of depends on where you are and maybe how deep your well is, and how close the well is to your septic tank, or where you might be in the valley relative to known plumes of nitrate that come from, say, Winnebago Farms or other operations out there.
What is about, what is the, say, that, what you say is the average depth of the wells out there?
Yeah, so the, I'd say that, I actually don't know the answer to that, but my guess is that the private wells are pretty shallow, you know? I mean, they would just be drilled, especially back when they were drilled, there was no concern for nitrate, so they were probably shallow.
Probably 150, 200 feet, probably at the most.
Yeah.
So to follow up on that, I guess I've always kind of questioned whether we're taking the right direction here. I understand the problem is coming from the septics, which is adding the nitrates, which is making the water unsafe to drink. Now, we can go, if we go ahead and we were to find the money and move ahead and put in a sewer system, we've still got the nitrates in the water, or in the ground. One question is, how long is it gonna take that to clean up? It's been decades in coming, will it be decades in cleaning it up? So should we be moving at, rather than looking at the septic tanks, should we be looking at water systems? Because there's where the problem is, is the unsafe water. Like you said, the state could, it doesn't even care about the nitrates until the water becomes unsafe to drink.
Yeah.
So why?
No, it's a great question, and I think that what Dave and I are really aiming to do here is address both, because they're connected, right? I mean, you have, you've got really a wastewater issue, so to speak, a groundwater contamination issue, and then you've got a drinking water issue, and they're completely interconnected. And so, you know, the thought is, let's take the two-pronged approach, you know, we're gonna try to stop the contamination or reduce it significantly, and also try to deal with the water, and that's why, you know, I feel like for the county, it would be advantageous to own and operate those two water systems, but whether you do or don't, those water systems have those issues, you know, so they're gonna have to figure out how to provide safe drinking water. For the public out there that's on their own wells, you know, they'd have to put like, sort of what we call point-of-use systems on their, under their sink, you know, so that they're getting, that would definitely be something I would do. But you're right, Commissioner, they're totally intertwined, and we have to look at both water and the septic issue at the same time.
So is there any, I mean, I guess if you're gonna, if you put in a water system, you gotta put in water lines. So if you're putting in water lines, there's your, there's a big part of the cost of the whole system.
Yeah.
So you could be laying sewer lines along, I don't know, can you lay sewer lines alongside the water lines?
They can't be in the same trench, unfortunately. They gotta be 10 feet apart, but, yeah, I see where you're going there.
I guess I'm looking at cheapening this whole thing up, you know, from $30 million to 15 million, and that's to put in a water system now and look at sewer system down the road. If we gotta put it in a separate trench, I mean, I don't know if you're saving any money by doing them both at the same time.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, you really probably aren't, only just because you have, they're separate systems, separate trenches and so forth, but the only thing maybe you'd get is economy of scale, you know, a bigger project, but.
Kind of a follow-up on that, Commissioner, I think, in, just having the septic tanks in play, that was kind of the henery in the coal mine, so to speak. It was the density that really got to us more than anything, it was long before our time on the commission and whatnot, but we went, you know, we're well over 80, 80 septic tanks per square mile in some of those areas, and we will, and the fact that we have been collecting that data and actually have been reporting that data now for decades, I think puts us in a position of two things. One, I think we have to, from a regulatory standpoint, try to mitigate those levels of nitrates before we start permitting people to drill wells in those locations with regard to the zoning requirements in those areas, because we are, we've reached a point now where we know we're gonna have, we've exceeded, in some of those locations on that map, we've exceeded that 10 milligrams per liter level for some time. So I think ultimately, we have to move toward that direction of mitigating the production of nitrates into the groundwater, and at the same time, I think what we're gonna have to do is look real hard at trying to mitigate the problem we already have in the areas such as Gold Country and then over the hilt as we head down toward I-80, down in that area toward Davis Lane, that area there, we're gonna have to do something with that, it's already exceeded. I think, I think probably the stew of, I call it that, the stew of funding that was outlined by Dave, the fact that that money's out there, I think is important, is part of our decision-making process in here, and I think we need to move forward with that understanding that that money is out there and that there's an understanding that we've reached a point of critical mass on nitrates, so.
Yeah, I don't disagree that we should, if we can, take advantage of these dollars that might be available for this project, but definitely needs, I need some assurances rather than, yeah, there's money out there and we might be able to get it. I need assurances that we can, that it's there.
Don't disagree.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. I guess I look at it a little differently. I look at it as if you don't put in a sewer system out there, that you're just covering the problem up and kicking it down the road. No matter how long it takes for those nitrates to solve their problem and clean themselves up in the future, the water can't clean itself up if you don't continually dump nitrates into it. So I think you need to look at that as a solution for the problem, rather than just to cover it up.
Yeah, and I see where you're coming, but really, there is no problem if you take care of the water. If you make the water safe, where's the problem there?
It's in the private, it's in the private wells, you know.
You could not.
You're permitting private wells to be drilled in an area, you know, you've exceeded that 10 milligrams per liter.
That would have to cease, you could, all private wells would have to be capped, you could not.
Couldn't allow that.
You couldn't allow that, no. There would be no more private wells, and if you're, if you dug a hole, if you dug a well 800 feet deep and that was your municipal water, you might be, you know, you shouldn't be any nitrates that deep, but I don't know that, I would think so. You should have safe drinking water. That's what we're trying to do, is provide safe drinking water. The nitrates are the, or the septic tanks are the cause, but they're not the problem. The nitrates are the problem in the drinking water.
Yeah, what I could foresee over time, probably in an area like this, if I had to predict, is the construction of a sewer system, a slow expansion of that system, and also an expansion of that water system out there, and a reduction of probably both septic tanks and private wells, you know, but you gotta start somewhere, so you have that core of water systems, that's why I think if the county were able to negotiate, then you'd have control over that expansion, otherwise a private party would, you know, you'd have to work with them and stuff, but I think that that's what you're gonna see, kind of an expansion of both of those things, because that problem, otherwise you're gonna just see a halting of development and an increase of...
Yeah, we're just putting a Band-Aid on it if we don't stop at all, and that concerns me with the Pershing, I'm not familiar with it enough out there. concerns me with the Pershing, I, I'm not familiar with it enough out there, but we're taking care of the Humboldt County side. If we can't take care of the Pershing County side, we're just kind of putting a Band-Aid on it, continue to put nitrogen in the water.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Mr. Farr actually, um, alluded to it briefly here just a second ago, and that was the one thing I had on my list here I didn't mention the first time, is that by putting a Band-Aid on it, so to speak, using that term, um, eventually, what we do is, is we, um, we create a situation where we've, we pretty much cease and desist in terms of development of Grass Valley. We pretty much lose that ability for us to, for our community to expand out into Grass Valley any further. So I think ultimately, um, like with a lot of the decisions we've had to make, whether it be this building or whether it be communications or anything else, we're behind the eight ball on this thing and, and in some areas of it. And I, uh, and I think my view of it is, um, if the, if the dollars are available, uh, and I'm not talking about the USDA loans or the bonding, I'm talking about the ARPA funds as well as the dollars that, um, that are available through other state revolving fund and, and such, um, I think, I think we're gonna have to phase this in, but I think we need to get started sooner than later, as long as that money's out there.
I agree.
ARPA funds for sure are gonna dry up in, in what, two years? So, um, uh, and they listed these kinds of projects by name, you know, in that, in that, that legislation, so with that, I, I'll just bring it back to you, Mr. Farr.
No, thank you. Yeah, and, and just on a note in regard to funding, it, it's a, it's a project that, you know, the state is thoroughly behind, you know, to the extent that they can fund it, um, with grant funds, I, I believe they will. So they're, they're very supportive. I mean, I, it's, it's obviously a project that, uh, that gets their attention because of the issues with the groundwater and, you know, that kind of thing, so it's got their attention for sure. Let's go to the next slide, Dave.
Uh, I just have one more question. You had mentioned at the beginning that the septics played a, a role in the nitrates, among other things, what are the other things that, that contribute to the high nitrates besides the septic?
Well, um, you know, Winnebago Farms has been a contributing factor as well over time, and, um, there's a study that was done recently that showed that, um, high pumping from certain ag wells has kind of somewhat changed the course of the direction of groundwater flow in that area, so it's pulling, you know, uh.
Water from elsewhere?
From, yeah, well, I mean, from the contaminated areas like Winnebago Farms into the, into those areas, so, um, it's really, though, it's, you know, it's just a combination of, uh, septic tanks and agriculture and it's just the way it is.
I, I guess the question that would come to mind is, we've put all this money into this treatment and, and we still have other problems, um, and, and it doesn't fix our What's being done in your study to, I guess, assure us that, that we spend all this money on a water treatment plant, that it will actually bring the nitrate levels down to a acceptable level?
That's a great question. I mean, I don't think what, necessarily what we're proposing is a cure-all, um, you know, and that's why the master plan, I think we kind of take a step back and look at what are all the components that are required to kind of address the issue out there, some of which may be in, in your control and some may not, I don't know, so, you know, some things are, um, there's, there's political issues and ramifications, but I think what we'll at least know is what all the issues are and what your options are for addressing those, and, uh, some of them are gonna be, I think what we're dealing with here is probably the low-hanging fruit, and then there's probably some more complicated issues to tackle down the road.
Fair enough, thank you.
Brad?
Yeah.
Commissioner House again. So I, I look at the maps, I know that area fairly well, six to seven hundred homes isn't even gonna, isn't even gonna put a Band-Aid on this. We are already showing nitrates on the West Winnebago Bowl outside, so in order to make this a little shorter, you're asking to do more on the master plan, is that correct?
Yeah.
And that would show us what Commissioner Hill was just talking about. Have they done any more studies on the Winnebago Farms properties? Are they still putting nitrate, or putting water out with possibility of nitrates in it?
I actually don't know the answer to that.
I don't either.
I.
Yeah. They did suspend that, but however, um, I've been told that they're, they are washing potatoes there, so, still, and so I would suspect that they are doing something that will continue, you know, to be a problem. That would be a good question for them to answer of the commission, I think, um, at some point in time.
Well, if we're gonna continue putting nitrates in the ground from them processing anything there, we need to address it also, because they're dumping it on the ground out there, and that's what started part of that nitrate problems.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, I don't know that to be a fact, I was just told through a third party that they believe that they are still washing potatoes out there, I don't know.
I was told that as well. I think, um, Commissioner House, that's, you know, you know, that's a great point, and I, but I think you make the case for a master plan, um, uh, look at how we're gonna strategize all of those uses and all of those sources of nitrates, because there's obviously, you know, you can, you can either limit it by, uh, drying up, uh, the use of septic tanks in there, as we've proposed in some areas. You can also talk about remediation and with regard to, um, what they're doing, for instance, Winnebago Farms, and, and, uh, there's a lot of companies, um, most of them in the East Coast that actually remediate, um, uh, the production of nitrates into, into, onto the ground, for instance, in that type of a situation, with just, uh, the growth of certain kinds of vegetation, to actually utilize that nitrogen before it goes into the groundwater. And it's been very successful in some locations, but I, and I think those kinds of discussions, when we had, you remember when we had the, the Water Summit? We had it down here and, and we had the community come in and we actually talked about some of the things that we, some of our challenges at the time? That was kind of the precursor to where we're going with this, with this master plan right now, is that this is what our, this is what the sources are, this is what our concerns are with what we're seeing on the last twenty years of, of nitrate, um, contamination, and these are, this is the scope of activities I think we can do to mediate those issues, and I think, um, and I think ultimately, that's where I think we need to go right now, because you're, you're right, we don't know exactly what we don't know yet. We need to, we need, uh, a little bit more time, and then we need to talk about what are we gonna do with, what are we gonna do with remediation? What are, are we gonna require remediation on those kinds of, of discharges? So, uh, that's, that's a great point.
I really think that this is a Band-Aid. You're, you know, they're, they're talking about if Lithium Nevada gets their permits of building a lot of structures here that are gonna need water and, and sewer, uh, if Salmon Facility gets going, and it's gonna increase, and I think you're too low at six to seven hundred on what we have need of right now, so maybe you ought to triple that. I mean, you know, at least give us an idea if we, you know, the sewer plant out there has been in need for forty years. And, uh, you know, they'd love, like to get started on it, we'd like to get the nitrates down, uh, but we also have some growth possibilities coming in too that we're gonna have to deal with in the master plan, what, what we do with it?
Those are all really good points, and I think what we're doing here is hopefully establishing a starting point. I, i- and you're right, it, it needs to be bigger than what's planned, um, but I have a belief that if we get something started, get something done, it'll naturally grow a, as the needs are there. If there's demand on development, you know, then they, if there's something already there, then they can contribute connection fees, et cetera, that can help with either expanding the plant or, you know, and then there's gotta be some public policy there too on what you're gonna allow and not allow, and, but if you get going with something, then you've got a foundation to just let it grow and solve the problem over time, I think.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so just to add to that, one of the discussions we've had with Jason Cooper at the State Revolving Fund was that once we get a base system in, then we can be on their constant priority list and try to get two million dollars a year, which is between the two different, we can get money from both the water and the, oh, it's clean water and water, there's two different funds there, but if we could get two million dollars a year, we can grow that out every year, we can add on over the time and do that over the course of the next five, six years. So I just think, I didn't want to take on too much, we wanted to be able to do it right, get it done, get it started, and then again, I notice, if you look at their priority plan that they, list they put out every year, you've got communities just like this that are on there every year for updates and upgrades, and they're adding on to their systems or they're maintaining their systems and, and things like that, so that was my thought process.
Yeah.
And I agree with this, Commissioner Hill, I agree with that somewhat, you know, if, if we start small and then we have a development that decides to come in, then the developer can pay for that, they can pay to hook on, they can pay for all the infrastructure, but, you know, as Commissioner House stated, six hundred homes, what do we do with the other eighteen hundred that, that need to be actually put on to this? How, how do we, how do we pass that on to those, or how do we grow that side of the system, you know? The new development will take care of itself, I agree with you, but how, how do we continue to help the old development? How do we continue to get those added on? I mean, those are things that we.
You know, the, the strategy, Commissioner Hill, initially was to, um, to go to the hotspots first. If you look at the map with the bullseyes on it in terms of where the nitrate levels are high, and that's where.
High concentrates.
And that's where we're putting a lot of the effort and energy into it now, and with the idea behind it with the master plan to actually ident, get, it should give us enough time to where we can, we can grow this system out toward those areas where we anticipate this thing to, you know, to get, uh, become worse over time, um, and at the same time, allow for development in, uh, you know, as we go farther out toward Pershing County that way.
But I agree, we need to start somewhere, has to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think once you have something started, it'll, you know, it'll start to grow and expand little by little. So were we on to, uh, we, we got back to the first slide somehow?
Oh, that's because I went out of it real quick here.
Oh. So let's take a look at the two overarching sort of solutions or alternatives here.
Which one were, which one do you want?
Uh, alternative one, current alternatives considered.
There you go.
Okay. So, you know, broadly speaking, we, we're looking at two alternatives. One would be to, to connect to the city system, and one would be to construct facilities in Grass Valley. And so we looked at this, um, kind of hard to see maybe on the little screen there, but, you know, basically it shows a connection to the northeast, and then we actually also have to expand, um, or add a line that, you know, to increase capacity in the city's system to, to push all this flow through, uh, their existing facilities, and, uh, and then, of course, then we'd be connected to their sewer treatment facility, so, you know, this alternative, you can see a lot of the cost is in pipe, um, sixty thousand feet, basically, um, and sixty-six hundred feet of force main, that's pretty much, I mean, that, that sixty thousand feet of gravity sewer is the same for either alternative, because that's just sewer-ing the, the communities, you know? The difference there is the force main, and then, um, well, that's sixteen thousand feet of force main that has to go to the northeast, and then you have, uh, three lift stations that would be required for either alternative. The big difference when we look at the costs, though, has to do with paying connection fees and things like that, so we'll get to that in a minute, but does any questions on just the, sort of the civil engineering aspect of this alternative?
So if, if a sewer system goes in, what happens to the septic tanks? Are they allowed to remain or are they required to remove them?
So that's, let me just describe the way it worked for a big project that we did in Dayton, you know, there, it was interesting, because the, uh, the DA, working with the commissioners in the state, there, there's this interesting clause in the Nevada Revised Statutes that allows a local government to, um, basically rescind septic tank permits. It's an interesting thing, because they're, they're not a permanent thing, they're, they're temporary permits, and so if it's shown that, uh, a source like that is contaminating the groundwater, you can basically tell those individuals that you're revoking the permit. And now, that's a political decision, but for the areas of the project, you really want everybody to connect, otherwise you're leaving, you know, that, that source of contamination. So you would hope that all of those residents through some act of the commissioners would be encouraged to connect to the system, and then what we basically do is, you know, you, you literally reroute the sewer from the house to the front and into the, and then you, you, um, you abandon the septic tank just by, uh, filling it with sand, and that's, that's what we did.
And, Mr. Chair, just want to add one thing, Dave Mindiola, um, again, that's another discussion that we've had with Jason Cooper and the State Revolving Fund is, as part of this overall funding, would include money for all of those private residents to, to do the connection to the main line and to also fill the, um, septic tank. So the goal, our goal is to have no cost to the individual property owner.
Except for the monthly fee after.
Except for the fees afterwards, yes. Yes, that would change, but, uh, that's the goal, and that's what our hope is, is that we make it as easy as possible for those property owners to, because they've obviously got an investment in that, in that septic system, and so, you know, asking them to come up with thirty-five hundred bucks, it's a big ask, um, and in some cases, it would be impossible for some people. So our goal is to have that money readily available so that it makes it really easy.
Okay, let's go to the other alternative, which is the, uh, the alternative to construct a sewer system and treatment facility in, um, in Grass Valley, and you can see it, it's kind of hard, you can see there to the, I guess, to the west or the left of the picture, there's a little green box that says, uh, wastewater treatment plant. So you can see that's kind of the general area of where we're currently proposing it, but again, this is pretty preliminary, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, we don't have, we haven't negotiated on the land or anything like that, and, but that's, that is a ideal or reasonable location that we could choose. But, you know, this, a lot of the elements are the same, you know, you still have to sewer the subdivisions, you still have to, you know, pump it.
Yes.
The only difference here is that you've got the mechanical treatment facility as part of the project, and you don't have the long force main that goes out to the, to the city, so that's really the trade-off there. But you also have more control over what gets done in this case, um, in terms of expanding the plant and, and those sorts of things.
So, Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola again, so one of the things you'll notice here, I'll move this over a little bit here, it's gonna take a second to catch up, but, um, so here, and I'll try to highlight it here, so in this area here, of course, this is Star City and Gold Country, and as you can see in comparison to density, uh, it's quite a few homes that you would engage, about five hundred, uh, in those two areas, and then what we did as part of that expansion that we discussed with the, the group that's working on this was we included the elementary school here and also the Mormon church, and then down, uh, all the way down here to the bottom on three different roads here, and, and then we grabbed in down at the bottom here, southern part of the area, and then brought this line all the way over. So we do pick up a number of other homes, but as you can see, it's a lot sparser as you get farther out, and that's why I was suggesting that if over time, every year, we make an effort with a million or two dollars to, to grab another ten, fifteen, twenty houses, whatever we can pick, in time, you're gonna get there, so.
I appreciate you pointing that out, I, I'd forgotten to mention that we are, you know, even in these alternatives, looking a little broader than just the two subdivisions, which is kind of nice. Again, trying to look at low-hanging fruit, what could we pick up that has relatively high density or high flows? And then, yeah, as you get further out, it, it gets real costly because it's so sparse.
So when, when you're looking at this plan, and you're looking at future maybe high densities, those bare areas that are within those boundaries, would your, would your plan, um, have in it to put main line through those areas for future development?
So the, the idea there, uh, the master plan would look at that and kind of determine how the, you know, what the density could be in there and how it could be subdivided. We, we probably wouldn't initially put any pipe in there, um, just because of the cost, but that, that would be kind of an owner-developer expense.
Yeah.
But we would, but, but the deal is, the reason for the master plan is making sure that, for example, these lines are sized properly. that, for example, these lines are sized properly. Because could you imagine then, you, you put a line in there just for what's there now and then all this stuff comes later and you realize, oh, I should have put in a 10-inch pipe instead of an eight after, you know, like all that length. And so that's why we kind of want to look at it and say, let's be careful about how we size certain components of the system so that as additional people connect, we're not undersizing certain things and, and costing a lot of, of money down the road. So that's what kind of got us thinking. We better, it's not as simple as just looking at Gold Country and Star City. We need to look at the big picture and determine how to size, um, certain things, including the treatment plant. For example, is if this area is built out to the extent that we think we could serve with sewer, how big should that plant really be? And we're not going to build that right up front because you don't, you know, it's hard to get money for something that's going to happen in the future, but you want it to be in a site where you can expand it and have enough room. And so... Um, just as a side note, there's a, there's a note on this slide that talks about, you know, there's different alternatives for how we dispose of the water. Uh, the traditional method in a rural treatment plant like this would be through rapid infiltration basins where you just pump it into a, a pond and it just drains into the ground. I mean, it's treated, so that's okay. But there are other methods too with, with the agricultural round. You could store it in a pond and use it for, you know, alfalfa or something, you know, if somebody wanted it. It tends not to be like a ton of water. So, um, for a farming operation or an ag operation, it's not a ton. But if it were enough, that was, that's definitely an opportunity, you know, for somebody to use it. So, let's go to the next slide here and I'll just caution you that, you know, these are, are pretty preliminary numbers. Um, I don't want you to kind of sort of hang your hat on these right now, although they're based on, like for example, the sewer lines on recent costs for installation. You know, we're in a interesting environment right now, as you know, in terms of cost of construction, uh, very high, um, material costs very high. So, you know, it's a thing where like, we're in a planning stage, uh, by the time, you know, we actually are moving dirt could be two years down the road where things maybe are different, you know? Could be more, could be less, right? Depending on how things play out in the economy. So these are, these are planning level estimates, uh, for what we know right now. And what's interesting is that they, they really come out sort of comparable, um, because you've got a trade-off between, say, um, you know, force mains and, and a treatment facility and that kind of thing. So, uh, again, they're, they're pretty comparable. Um, we look at the operation and maintenance of, uh, of an onsite facility to be a bit lower than connecting to the city. Uh, one of the footnotes I think that's really important here is that the way that the city would handle this, at least initially, their policy would be that for anybody outside the city, you're going to pay a premium to connect. And I've seen that before, um, and you could argue either way whether or not that's, seems fair or appropriate. But for outside residents, they're going to charge one and a half times the connection fee and one and a half times the, uh, the monthly rate. And, and that's in perpetuity. So you figure, like if you did sort of a 20-year analysis and you're, you're paying that much more each month, um, that would go a lot towards, say, if you had to bond a little bit for this project, that would go a lot towards paying your own bonds and not paying the city just a premium for, just because you're outside the city. So that's a big factor there in how it would play out over time in terms of cost. And, uh, and the connection fees, you know, one and a half times the connection fee where if we're fortunate enough, uh, we might end up with a project that is financed, um, where the, the state may, we may not require connection fees, you know? So that option has some, some limitations. Plus the, um, you know, the city, I think, has gone back and forth just a little bit about how much capacity they really want to allocate to Grass Valley, right? So, you know, at some point, what's going to happen is you're going to, you're going to trigger an expansion of their own plant. And, uh, so I, I just don't know that they have the full capacity to take what we're thinking about in the long term out there. So that's, we, you know, we're really right now leaning towards the, uh, the new wastewater treatment plant and, uh, you know, in Grass Valley. And I think that that's, that's the option we're going to pursue or propose to pursue. That's up to you. Um, let's go to that next slide and it shows current recommended alternative. Okay? So that's, that's what we say current recommendation is to, uh, the county to own and operate a facility and, um, build the treatment plant. And although it's not part of this scope, I also, you know, obviously working with Dave on the idea of, of owning and operating water systems out there as well to kind of bring all the solutions together. Um, but that's, the water's kind of a separate project. But here you, you maintain control. You avoid the surcharge rates. Um, you expand to serve an area, you know, that the city may just run out of capacity. Um, so now, that said, there are some areas kind of up really close to the city limits that, that if they develop, might make sense to connect, right? So, you know, rather than running a line, 15,000 feet of line to pick someone up that's like right bordering the city, you got to think about that one, you know, and say, well, you know, if there's some parcels there that want to connect or there's some development, the city could take those little pieces and connect them, you know? So it's not, I don't want to say broad brush that we, no one would ever connect to the city. In some cases, it would make sense.
Does this show that there's two potential sites for the, the treatment plant?
Yeah, thank you. It, it really does. Um, and again, we're, that's in its infancy. I mean, I think, you know, kind of showing what...
Yeah.
A, a piece that makes sense, but then you've got, you know, negotiations, you've got concerns over, you know, the impact of property from odor. Um, but those are some initial ideas of where you might be able to locate a facility.
Sure.
Last slide is just some recommendations, uh, including, you know, looking, you, you've provided great feedback as we've gone here. So, um, if there's additional feedback, that would be great. Uh, we've talked about the master plan, um, and kind of making sure we're not undersizing any facilities. Uh, we want to complete the master plan and the PER and, and be aggressive with funding. You know, right now, I can tell you, I've not seen an environment quite like this where, where funding opportunities are available for projects like this. Over the next five years, I think that's going to be, um, a really strong opportunity for the county to take advantage of. So we want to be aggressive in the sense of getting our ducks in a row and, you know, being front in line and, and being consistent in our negotiations with the state. We have to also look at some of those easements and, and land lease purchases and things like that for construction, primarily for the treatment plant, but also for certain select sewer lines. So that's my presentation this morning and, uh, would love to get any feedback or ideas or...
Brett, this is Commissioner French. Um, one of the things I wondered about having to do with, um, the, has to do with the Persian County line boundary going through basically that, at least on the south end of this area that we're talking about, uh, building the project in. And as part of the master plan, um, should we be looking at, at negotiating with Persian County right now to determine what, what their needs are in that, and they're part of that area, that basin? And, and what impacts that could have with regard to sizing even and the location of our, uh, potential location for our treatment system, our treatment plant? I would think that if it's, if we located the treatment plant someplace to where we could have primarily gravity flow into it, even out of Persian County, it would be better than, and, um, maybe, uh, risking, uh, more lift, lift stations and whatnot in order to get, you know, uphill to the treatment plant.
I made a note here and I think, uh, Dave and I need to sit down with the proper people. I, I, I've done a little work for that county, so know some folks over there too. Um, but I think it would be great to sit down and kind of figure out what their interests might be in participating and locating things. I think it'd be great. So...
Yeah, actually Heidi, uh, their economic development agent, she sat in on a couple of our meetings. So she's, she's already engaged and is well aware of it too. Uh, one other thing too, commissioners, just got some information from Jan Morrison. So currently there are about 245 residential lots in Grass Valley that could be developed with septic tanks right now. Um, that's why this is kind of important that we do something before that problem gets larger. Um, and then we have an additional 1,888 lots that could be developed through simple land division. So the potential is to get pretty big over time.
Question. I didn't see on either the maps where this would connect to the airport industrial area. Does it?
That is part of the plan. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you for that. That, that's, I think, probably discussed in the, in the PER. So there's opportunity there for the city to, uh, to make connections and things like that. And, and, because they've got no sewer out there either and it could open up some opportunities for them. So they're aware of that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's really kind of part of the master plan too, to kind of look at what potential flows could come from that area, make sure that we're accommodating for that.
Okay, any additional questions, Mr. Park?
I think in front of us, we have under item B of this is consideration, uh, for the possible approval of an amendment for the master services agreement between Humboldt County and Far West Engineering to expand the scope of preliminary engineering report to the master sewer plan for the entire Grass Valley area for both the short and long-term plan and an amount not to exceed $37,600. I think that's what's in front of us today.
That's correct.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. We have a discussion on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any decline? Okay. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For having me here today. I appreciate it. I appreciate working with you.
Nice coming down, Brett. Appreciate it. We'll be talking. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I check on one thing first? We do have the folks from Wells Fargo and our comptroller and treasurer. We may want to just take that right now. But let me check on one. I have one individual who I don't know what their schedule is. I don't want to lose them. Um, and, and that's Shannon Ernst out of Churchill County. Shannon, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, sir.
Yes, I am, sir.
What, what is your timeframe? We have one here that I'm guessing will take us 20 minutes maybe or so?
That should be fine.
And could you hang, that okay? Great. Then we'll go there and then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Thanks, Shannon.
And in the interest of keeping commissioners here, we're going to take five minutes. So...
Yeah. I already took mine. It's a little late. About two hours. Yeah, that's a good point.
Because you're trenching on that pipe, Jesus Christ.
And easements, testing the body easements.
Yeah, just, you know, you could go a mile, sir, but you...
Right, yeah. Yeah, the concentrated areas, but you start looking out into this.
Yeah.
I mean, this is pretty sparse, but still...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
I don't know why this thing keeps readjusting. But yeah, it's a, it's an animal.
Mm-hmm.
Big animal. Can you imagine the guy that moves here, puts out 100,000, oh, shoot, 200,000 now, just trade letter, another 100,000 for all your utilities. And then a month later, you got to put out another five grand to hook it up.
No, it wouldn't be a miss, sir. It wouldn't be a miss.
Your septic tank's no longer any good.
Find out your water.
Hey, you, and...
There, there she is.
You don't have to do that.
That's right. Perfect. All right. Now, we have these...
So you just drill the well and as soon as Jared gets down, he pumps water. So you got water.
Yeah.
There's no requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we pumped all the dirt out of it.
Thank you.
You certainly can do that.
You guys go back to Cascade?
We did. Or no, we went to, no, we're going back next weekend. Cooper and I went, I think last weekend. I, I've been gone for the last six weekends. We went to, um...
I'm Wells Fargo. Um, I'm the relationship manager for Humboldt County. I've worked with the county for almost 15 years, uh, with the relationship. And, um, as Rona struggled last spring, we said, you know, there's a different program that's really better fit for the county. The other program, as, as Rona mentioned, is really for sole proprietors where, you know, they need one or two cards. Um, the other program, we call it a purchasing card program or P-card program for short. Um, most of the other counties within the state use the same program. And it gives the county absolute control over who has the cards, what the limits are, where they can spend the card, spent, you know, use the cards. Uh, limits can be changed... Limits can be changed on the fly. Cards can be issued on the fly. Cards can be canceled on the fly. If someone goes on leave, you can take the limit to zero on the fly. All these things can be done by an administrator at the county. So ultimate control. You don't have to call Wells Fargo and say, "I need another card," or "I need to change a limit," where it takes weeks or months to happen. So our recommendation was to take a look at this card program. And we've had several meetings with Rona and Gina to talk about how that looks and the controls that the county would have. I think one of the other concerns that we have heard from the county is that what happens if there's employee misuse of a card? Well, and I think you all have this second page up here. There is $100,000 liability protection against internal fraud. So there are lots of controls that the county can use. They can look at transactions on a daily basis. And I think I'll just turn it over to Luke at this point, and he can talk about some of those daily alerts and things that the groups could look at going at the transaction level.
Thank you so much. So Luke Bone, I'm a treasury management consultant. I work alongside Lynn on the county relationships. So thanks for meeting with us for a couple of minutes here today. A couple of things to highlight on that first slide, actually, that she kind of mentioned on. So with the credit limits, you know, we set those up and we, you know, roll out the card program. We would work with Rona when we establish that and figure out what's the best way to do that. How many cards do you currently have? What's that current landscape? And what's really great about that is if someone's going to be doing any type of travel on behalf of the county, if those limits need to be updated, you can do so. If someone's on leave, like she says, you can do that as well. Canceling card is in real time. Issuing new cards, you request a new card through the administrative portal and they come in very quickly rather than having to do a rigorous application process. Going back a little bit to that Business Elite card program that you're currently using, that's, again, probably two, three card max. And that process is something that we do not manage at the bank. So with us, you'd be working with your relationship team that works with you, and we have the resources to ensure it's shaped the way the county needs to have it. And that's a really big advantage of this. Something else that's really important to highlight is you can limit the merchants that people can visit. So each merchant has a type of category code. So when they go somewhere, pull up as a certain code number. Let's say the liquor store is usually a great example. Usually you don't want people using the card to go to the liquor store. You can make sure that that cannot be done. With the current card program, we don't have those type of limitations you can put into place. So those controls are very important to you all, and it's very important to us to do that. So when we set the program up, we also say, where are they going to be allowed to use it? Why are they going to be allowed to use it? Let's make sure we check that off. I think that's really important. So really, the controls and that compliance and that first slider, what I want to highlight there. Now, if we go on to the next slide where it talks about the alerts, I think that's really important to kind of keep in mind. It's all real time. Everything you change you make is in real time. And we have a servicing center that's always there to help you through those things. I think it's really important to have that because it can give you information about any suspicious activity or fraudulent, potential fraudulent purchases so that you can turn the cards off immediately. So that gives you the power for the administrators to help with that, also with the cardholders to help with that. I think that's a really important thing to remember. Additionally, it kind of goes back to the available credit. You can get real-time updates about how much credit you have left. Again, let's say you're traveling on the path to the county. You're using your card more than normal. Hey, I don't know how much funds I have left. Oh, I need to reach out to Rona. I need to get an increase. Make sure she understands how you're using it. She can also see how each card is being used at all times. She'll be able to go into the administrator portal, look at recording in real time. She doesn't have to wait till the end of the month to get the card statements, which is a really important piece of the puzzle, I think, as well. So what I want to do now is, Kia, I know you're on the line. You go to the next slide here. She's going to highlight some of the things about what they'll have capabilities of doing and kind of how it looks to have that type of administrative landscape on the cards. Because while she runs getting the new cards and issuing them after that, it's very limited in terms of what she can see and do. And I think that's what this will provide to you. So Kia, if you're on the line, could you go over that slide? Kind of reviewing the expense manager tool.
Absolutely, Luke, and good morning to everyone. I'm Kia Fields, Pabels consultant, and I partner with Lynn and Luke. And when it comes to our Wells One commercial cards, we're excited to kind of just do a quick overview for everyone this morning. So one of the major difference between the program you have today with Business Elite and the Wells One commercial card that we're presenting to today is that it comes with Wells One expense manager for the county. It's been highlighted by Lynn and Luke a lot in reference to the capabilities and being able to log into the system and be able to make changes in real time from a credit limit perspective. If you need to make a change to a credit limit, you would log into the system and be able to do that. You're no longer dealing with the 1-800 number or an email. This portal is housed within Commercial Electronic Office, which is where we house all of our treasury services. So a single sign-on for anybody who's responsible for managing the program for the county. You also have some additional controls when it comes to the credit limit perspective. You can also do a daily credit limit. You can do a transaction credit limit limitation on the cards as well. So you have a lot of customization. You're able to see transactions in real time as well. So as the transaction occurs, you'd be able to log in and see any pending transactions as well as any posted transactions. There's a lot more reporting functionality in this system than you would see in the Business Elite that you have today. So a lot of the ability to customize reports for the county that you would like to see, maybe any transactions over a certain threshold. You can pull that report. You can pull a report for full transactions of the, you know, for a given month or given time period. You also have the ability to pull what we call a general ledger report, which is really taking the data that the card's going to bring in. So where did they purchase? Where did they go to purchase supplies? For example, you have that default to a GL code. That is going to pull that data in. And really, what that would do for anybody who's managing the program, whether that's Gina or Rona or somebody within the county, they would be able to pull one report that they can import directly into their accounting system. So streamlining kind of that reporting functionality and getting that data back into the system. It does, the system also has the ability to capture receipts as well. So if we're wanting to get receipts, we store those for up to seven years. Those can be captured electronically for the county, whether that's through a mobile phone, whether that's through an email upload or desktop upload. We are also able to capture all the receipts, making that a streamlined process as well as being able to keep that data in our systems. You'd also be able to, Luke alluded to this already, but being able to change merchant category codes in real time or adding restrictions to the card. That's all just housed right there within the portal. So from a county perspective, you'd be able to go in and customize where the usage of those cards are by user. So very customized into if one user is going to be utilizing the card to just purchase supplies, that's all they'd be able to do. They wouldn't be able to use a card outside of, say, like a Staples or an Office Max or something to that effect. So a lot more controls, a lot more customization, a lot more visibility as well as a lot more reporting functions than currently what's on the program today. So I think from a managing the overall program, I think the county would benefit from the reporting capabilities as well as the controls as well as the visibility. So I'm just going to pause there and just ask if there's any questions.
So Kia mentioned something that I wanted to kind of look at, too, is in terms of the expense reporting. It's something else that we've talked about with Rona and Gina is that with people submitting their information and their expenses and they're being able to get all that in a timely manner, getting those receipts and getting the information. With something like this, they would be required to go in, and it's very easy steps to do so, to attest to what they spent, to upload receipt images and things of that matter. We retain all of that information for you to have that audit trail instead of having to kind of, I mean, essentially, you know, hunt people down to get that information from them. And then they will have the capability to review that and ensure that they're using the cards appropriately and that what they're submitting as part of their cards is not some type of personal expense that the county shouldn't be paying and should make their proper use of the cards. So it really adds that additional control. Because I think talking with you, Rona, you've had a lot of struggles with that. And that's something that they've spent a lot of time having to kind of run around and find those people to get that completed. So just something I kind of wanted to highlight there as well.
Gina, did you have?
I just wanted to add to what Luke was saying is that... And it's not even just simply, say, somebody for... This is kind of the report that I get submitted when somebody uses the card. Generally, people are pretty good about it. But if somebody loses a receipt, it takes them a while to track it down. And then by the time they track it down, they've got to get it to me. I've got to sort of audit it. Then I have to submit it for payment. And then you run into that whole time crunch of, are we getting it paid on time? There's those issues that we've had before. So the reporting is really, really something that I'm looking forward to. Also, we did have one instance of fraud. A card was used at a restaurant in New Jersey or something. We didn't know about it till the end of the month when the statement came in. And it was a considerable amount. I think it was $2,400 or something. We didn't know until we got that statement. Luckily, you know, we were able to resolve it. But... And then we did have that purchase that we needed to make on an emergency where Gina and Andy had to work together to get their limits combined so they could make a purchase that the county needed in kind of an emergency situation for the sheriff's office. With this product, that's something we can handle in-house, and we can take care of it on our own. We don't have to, or I don't have to run around tracking people down to be able to handle something like that. So I think, for me personally, I look at this product and I think, wow, this would really make my life a lot easier. But thank you.
And then, you know, just kind of to go to the last slide, I mean, this really just kind of highlights a lot of things that we're trying to discuss in terms of the benefits of having. And it's just really the first things that come to mind are on the right side, the control and simplicity. I think control is extremely important. Anytime you talk about credit cards, you want to have controls. You don't want people to have cards and kind of have the freedom to do, you know, kind of what they please with it. You know, I know we empower, you know, the county team members to utilize them as they see fit. But this way, you're able to see the insight, understand how they're using them, and being able to make changes in real time if that's required. And then going to the simplicity, you know, with Rona was just talking about with having access to seeing how activities going around, being able to do the expense reporting more efficiently and not having to wait on, you know, those types of vouchers she has to do and hunting information down. I think that's a really critical piece. And I think it's going to, you know, kind of goes to the left side there, and that's the time and the efficiency. It's going to eliminate a lot of time for her having to do that. You guys are going to be able to make real-time, you know, changes if there's something important to purchase for the county and being able to have that. And if it's an emergency purchase and you need to utilize a card and not have to make those types of shifts that you had to do in the past. And then I think the efficiency as well for them in terms of their reporting in a timely manner and having that information handy for them. I think that's going to be a really critical piece of all the reporting features that are able to, one, see how the cards are being used and, two, making sure all the, you know, systems for the county are updated in a timely manner. I think those are the most important things. Kia, before I kind of see if there's any questions, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think we covered everything that we had on our agenda, so thank you.
Thank you so much. So that's what we had there, but I wanted to see, you know, what questions there were around that and what we can help clarify the information provided.
Mr. Chair, do you have any questions?
I just have a question. Commissioner Hill, cost to the county? I guess, obviously, no different or no additional cost.
So for the first 12 months, there's, we call it a ramp-up period. I guess you could also refer to it as a trial period. And we do have spin requirements on the card. If the spin requirements are met, then we will. It is a cost-free solution, you know, the expense reporting tool and the card usage and all the other functionality and support that's provided with it.
Okay. You don't see any issues meeting the expense requirements, Gina?
Thank you, Gina Rackley, comptroller. Purposes of the record, no, I don't. And in fact, actually, you know, back up to when we very first went with the credit card program, there was just two or three cards. That's where we started. And so the first program has worked fine. But like has been said, now that we've added these additional cards. There's also a chance, you know, we've been discussing going self-funded for our insurance. And one of the things, if we do that, is they're going to want payment on a weekly basis. And so I'm looking into using this as that alternative to doing like a check or an ACH out of the bank account. I would entertain the idea of using a separate card just for those, that payment, that weekly payment. That will reach us to the spending threshold that Luke mentioned. And then once we do, which it would be $1 million, am I right? Is that the amount that's the... Mm-hmm. Oh, $480,000, okay. So then you reach over that, then there's benefits back to the county, actually. So it wouldn't be cost. It would actually, could, if we reached there, it would actually generate revenue.
The other question I would have is now that would be easier to issue cards. Is that going to change how we do business here? We're not going to be issuing more cards to employees?
The process will not change. We will still always go before the commissioners, before a card is issued. We would never do that. We've never changed that process. The commission adopted a policy when we first started taking credit cards, and that policy states that.
The other concern that I just thought of is making it easier to pay with credit cards now. A lot of vendors charge fees for using credit cards. Will that up the fees for the county now if we're going to be paying more with a credit card versus ACH or a PO or some sort of other issue? So my concern would be, would the county end up paying more credit card fees?
And I'll have Kia Field speak on that just a little bit. One thing I wanted to touch on really quick, though. So the minimum requirements when they get a zero cost for the program is $480,000. Now, in terms of the benefit back to the county, we would have to look at the spend because the spend usually starts around $1 million. And then once that spend gets there, that's when there would be, there would be revenue shared back with the county. And that means it's a hard dollar, you know, credit that you would receive for the amount you spent on the program. But Kia, I'll let you speak to the fees in terms of, you know, merchant charges and things of that matter.
Yeah, so if you are paying suppliers by card, that any merchant processing fees that would be on the supplier's side, that would not fall on the county.
And because what we can do is we can help assess who you're paying. And if that is something you want to, we can help identify who would be the most optimal suppliers to pay that way. And that would not try to pass some type of fee on your behalf. We would not suggest utilizing the card for that. Because a lot of times, the vendors that accept these payments are, a lot of them understand that they will have to pay their own processing fees for the card, and they don't pass the fee onto the county. We would not recommend that particular supplier if they were to try to pass the fee on to you.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any additional questions?
No. If our comptroller and our treasurer want it, then they'd think it's a good idea.
That's how I see it.
I'm in any position to argue with it.
That's how I see it. These two people sitting right here are amazing.
We brought the heavy hitters today.
Yeah. Yep. So in front of us today, then, is a possible approval for the move of the county credit card program from the current Wells Fargo offering to another within the Wells Fargo system for purposes of involving, improving the process to the county and allow for greater flexibility to manage the program. A motion to that effect?
I'll try. I would make a motion that we approve to move the county credit card program from the current Wells Fargo offering to another within the Wells Fargo system for the purposes of improving the process for the county and to allow for greater flexibility in the manage the program. Does that work?
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Can I have a minute of your time before you run off?
Yes, sir.
Wells Fargo Bank here in Winemucca is probably the largest bank that's here. You guys just mentioned getting on the phone and calling you if we have problems. You can't get ahold of Wells Fargo Bank here without vocally. And the, as it goes through, there's a recording that says you can. And then normally, it goes to corporate. It's not even doing that now. I realize that you guys have probably have nothing to do with that. But when you're sitting here, you know, I can't get through. The county can't get through. So, you know, it's something that affects all of us. And I did talk to... I got a call back from corporate the other day. And they said, "Well, you know, I'm sorry, but it's all due to COVID." And I said, "Why doesn't every bank in town have that problem then?" But if you would take that back to whoever you need to for us, I'd sure appreciate it. Tell them that, you know, there are some problems out here that need to be taken care of. Because you're losing customers, right and left. And, you know, for instance, we send somebody down there with a deposit, and it takes them 35 minutes to get the deposit done. Or we can walk to the bank from here. I mean, it's, you know... And I went in there the other day, spent better part of 35 minutes just waiting, you know, going through the line just so I could talk to the manager. So, anyway, if you would pass that on for us, please.
Do you know that they have a new manager?
Did you have a new manager there? Oh, she came back. I think she was the manager before. And so she is trying to staff up because between COVID and just short staff...
and just short staffing for all employers, right? They definitely are challenged to have enough people on the line to.
I, I know all about it. I know her, and she's doing a very good job. And those girls that have been there, she's been there. There's another young lady that's been there. Others have turned over, you know, in the last year or so. They're worked to death. I mean, they, they look like they've been on a marathon every day. I can keep up with it. And as I, it was Gerald who I talked to. I'm not sure what he's in. But I told Gerald, I said, look, I says, as big as Wells Fargo is, come on, you've got to have something out there that you can help us with, that we can get this taken care of. So that's all I'm saying.
Appreciate the feedback, and we will definitely share that.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, Dave, are we on board for?
Human Services, yes.
Yes, okay. So we're at item four, creation of Human Services Department in Humboldt County. Is consideration, discussion, possible action to formalize creation of a new Human Services Department in Humboldt County for the purposes of servicing the indigent and underserved population and to assume a portion of the public administrator responsibilities to the district attorney's, from the district attorney's office. Okay. Abel, are you going to handle this?
Part of it, I hope. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Abel Darrell Knob, Assistant County Manager, HR Director for purposes of the record. So if you recall last meeting, we came before you to request permission to hire for the Human Services Director position. And thankfully, you accepted that request. We are currently in the internal recruitment period. We also discussed, you know, the job description. That'll be coming in before you for some, some updates probably at your next meeting to better clarify the position. There was reference to the public administrator on there. We're going to remove that and focus on the public guardian aspectship of it because that's more in line with the, there's more synergy there with the human services case management aspect of it than the public administrator. I didn't realize there was a difference between the two. One has to do with estates when someone passes away, and the other one has to do with, you know, wards, public guardianship and all that. So.
So that's, that, excuse me, this is District Attorney McDonald. That's different approach from what the discussions have been for years?
No, the public guardianship aspect of it was, was what we've been discussing.
I don't recall any discussion about the public administrator.
Oh, I.
Not everything we've discussed has been targeted at that guardianship.
Not, not from my presentations. My presentations have been regarding public administrator and public guardian because that's the same function from a standpoint at the office. And so. Well, in our county code, the county administrator, which was elected, and I've, I've had all those discussions historically. The county administrator was always elected. And our county code indicated that the public guardian is, in fact, the, whoever is the, the public administrator. And so this, this slight change or description that Abel's referring to is, is new or different than the discussions I've had with, with the board for years as it relates to the day-to-day functions. Because included in some of those discussions were, in fact, how the, the public administrator is, is, when, when a ward passes, the, the public administrator is then just taking the, that work of closing up the financial and asset and those types of things. Those day-to-day functions were part of the discussion, at least from, from my presentations with this board. So that, that being said, I just want to bring that to the board's attention.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just the only question I have on that front, Mr. District Attorney, is if a, somebody passes and they go into probate, would that not require like a lawyer to handle that?
The, you are correct. That's no different than guardianship when you're in court. And, and the discussion all along has been the district attorney would be providing the legal work. However, when we are talking about the public administrator work, say somebody passes, and the discussions have been, do you want the DA or deputy DA or legal secretaries to continue to go out and do inventories of property? One example that I provided this board was a situation where, where a female died. She'd been residing in her motor home. And I had a deputy, actually Chief Deputy DA and Legal Secretary perform the inventory of that vehicle, home. And the, and some of the questions have always been, why, why are you not contracting that out to somebody? Well, in that situation, we find jewelry. And, and specifically, as it related to that one motor home, my deputy DA and Legal Secretary found $30,000 cash that we are responsible for. So the, the discussions that, and, and I know that that has been an example that I've previously brought up. And in my discussions have, have always talked about removing the day-to-day functions of the public administrator and public guardian from the office of the district attorney's office. The, the district attorney would always continue to perform the legal work as far as presenting matters with court. So it's, it's the commissioner's pleasure from there.
Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola, so, you know, I just think it's a semantics issue. We just need to sit down with the DA and maybe talk specifically about what those situations would be where the, the attorneys would be involved. And that way, anybody coming in would have a clear understanding of, you know, what their responsibilities are and when, and where they would then engage the DA to handle like that example right there or a probate issue or something like that. Would that be accurate?
Well, I think it's more than semantics. You're indicating that the public administrator, at least I heard a comment earlier that the public administrator was, is not part of this discussion. And, and I don't believe that's be true because of the presentations and examples that I've been, been providing to the board for years.
Well, I guess I'm not saying semantics, the language. It's a matter of understanding the language better so that we know exactly what, when, when does the DA get involved? Or when is it just day-to-day activity? What kind of things?
And that part, I, if I may, I, I agree because what was contemplated in, in the discussions that we've had is, is we would need to make some change. The law allows, and, and the mechanism that we are, would be contemplating in part, at least so far, had been, there's authorization in the veteran vice statutes that states that the county can eliminate the office of the, the public administrator, which had just historically been elected. Or in our case, in some handful of smaller counties, it's spelled out that the DA is the ex-official administrator. And that this board, as the commission, can create a department or office of public administrator. The, the way our current code is written is whoever is the public administrator, that person is also the public guardian. So I envisioned the process of, of involving county ordinances to address what we're doing with the public administrator as well as public guardian functions and offices, as well as some, I guess, enabling type of, of ordinance that would create at least the, the office of the Human Services Office. And then this commission could determine the policies and procedures from, from there in working with the director of that, that office.
I would agree. I would agree with that. I think that's, it's, it needs to come through the ordinance. And I just want to be sure that we have a clear understanding when we walk in day one. And you're right. I think what you're, you're suggesting has been discussed. It's just that we, in doing some of our research, it became very apparent to us that, you know, gosh, what if we, you know, if we put legal responsibilities onto this individual?
No.
It couldn't be good, that couldn't happen.
Yeah, we're, we're not talking about performing, appearing or filing legal pleadings. The district attorney's office would continue to do that. In fact, like in, in Churchill County, I, my recollection tells me there is a separate public administrator. It's separate from the district attorney's office as well as the, the social services office in Churchill County. So you're talking about a completely separate office, even from the DA's office. DA's office may be providing legal assistance, but it's, but it is separate.
Got you.
And I think why that second position is so critical is because, you know, ultimately, the vein, the court competency of this department is going to be indigent, helping those individuals. And so if we are adding these additional responsibilities to help the district attorney's office, we really need that second position to be able to provide those supporting functions that, you know, Mike's willing to give up that position in his office, the admin clerk one, for that second function. So not to, not to take away from the indigent side of it.
Yeah, both are, both are critical. And that's the key, I think. You know, we've got to be able to not have any hiccup. I've had several emails come in from different departments saying they were concerned that we would have some delay from the time that Nikki Lynn retires to when we actually find a replacement. And they were very concerned about that because of all the things that she does. So I think we've said all along that our number one goal is to get that handled, get them up and running. And then, you know, once we get the second person on, we can probably start some of the work, I suppose, with one individual. But that individual couldn't do both. You know, because there's, there's a lot of, as the district attorney has mentioned, there's a lot of day-to-day activity with these wards that needs to be handled. And so that's, that's the key why we brought two positions to you.
All right, great. So thank you, Dave, and thank you, Mike, for going back to the structure of the department and our expectations currently. We all know the history. We've kind of been here the last month. This has really just picked up steam ever since Nikki announced her retirement. So like I said, we have the internal recruitment going that ends this week. Then we'll open it up to the public for possibly a period of two weeks, depending on how many applicants we get and the quality of applicants. That may be extended or it may close at that time. Myself and the county manager have discussed a recruitment strategy and have identified some individuals to sit on an interview panel that have that social service experience. And so we're looking forward to, to moving forward, hopefully quickly but with quality on that, on that front. So as far as our expectations for this new position when they come on board, we've talked about strategically is to slowly transition in the responsibilities from the district attorney's office as far as the public guardianship and so on, allowing that individual to come before the board and request the position for the deputy position to allow for that. And really, I think the primary focus would be to work with, with Nikki Lynn for whatever amount of time that individual has with her, to learn the systems, the stakeholders, both internal within the county and externally, community organizations, nonprofits. I've listed some of them in my staff report, Community Health Nurse, Frontier Community Coalition, RSVP, Humboldt Connection Suicide, the Sheriff's Office, Winemucca PD, Rural Housing, Sixth Judicial District Court, and the Family Support Center, among others. So get to know that. And at the same time, while learning, you know, who those individuals are, start developing and thinking about process improvement, how we can better coordinate services and case management with local community groups. Are processes being duplicated around the community? How can we maybe centralize some of those processes to deliver a more effective response and not have these redundancies? And that way, you're more productive, less money's wasted. And that money that's saved can be then be used to target maybe some new programs to better help those individuals. So just kind of a, really a strategic approach all the way around is what, what we're hoping this individual can help provide the community. And ultimately, you know, if those things are streamlined, then the county indirectly saves money from those processes. You know, we're able to, to catch those individuals, provide a safety net and really have a robust case management where those individuals, before they, you know, fall any further, they're able to receive that assistance that they need. So also, longer term, what we've been looking at is, our expectation is to, the full integration of those responsibilities from the district attorney's office that we talked about into the new department, just working really seamlessly between the office and the human services function to administer those responsibilities as well as working with the grants coordinator of Humboldt County, Rochelle Paquette, to research grant opportunities that maybe we're not taking advantage of, that I believe, you know, we have Shannon Ernst here from Churchill County that she's been able to, over the years, take advantage of and really build a robust human services function or social services function down in Churchill County. So over time, that, that happening. The next would be to serve as the lead representative on social services issues for Humboldt County, whether it's through the board, city council, through legislative committees, and perhaps nationally, or through the IAF fund, or at least as a, somebody who's, has an interest and participates and really advocate for Humboldt County. You know, when it comes time for legislature, really having a voice to help pull some of those resources here where they're needed and serving in that capacity. And also effective administration of existing funds from the IAF fund that we're getting. We just got great news from Tammy that we got about $200,000, right around there.
Twenty-plus from Nikki.
Yeah. Nikki.
Yeah. So, you know, just really advocating for the counties in that respect so that that doesn't change. You know, Commissioner French worked really hard to, to make those changes and just having someone continue to advocate for, for Humboldt County in that respect. And also developing a strategic plan for the administration of social services in Humboldt County for residents and presenting that plan to the board for approval. So over the first, you know, first year, three years, five years, really providing a roadmap as to where we are now, where we could be in the near term and the long term, and giving you a better idea. You know, we talked about that at the last meeting. Well, how's this going to look? Who's going to pay for what? And we don't, really don't have those answers right now. It's going to be up to this individual to figure out what our needs are for the community, develop a plan around them, investigate what's out there as far as resources that could help, and bringing that before you and saying, here are the priorities as I see them, and giving you the opportunity to weigh in on them. Are those same priorities the boards? Because ultimately, that's the direction the county will go in through what you decide to approve. Dave, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I just, I think that one of the things we tried to do today is give you a sense, and that's why we've asked Shannon Ernst to, to join us here today. Shannon, as she will tell you, was, was at the, at the very outset of Churchill County's efforts. She was a part of that organization early on and then took over. And it's grown into a much larger organization, as you will hear. But our, our goal of having Shannon here today is to tell you how, how it happened at Churchill County, where they started, and, and kind of walk you through that. And to also answer some specific questions, possibly of yours about, you know, how do we start? What's the best way to start this? And, and those kind of suggestions. And I think unless there's some other questions, might be a good time to ask Shannon to come in here.
And we do have a, she does have a PowerPoint presentation that she sent us. Shannon, I don't know if that's something you can upload from your side to share or we can do it from our side as well?
I have it here.
Okay.
There you go, Shannon.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. So, good afternoon. I'm Shannon Ernst. I'm with Churchill County Social Services. The first few slides really I'll go through quite quickly. It just kind of talks about what our responsibility is by statute. One of the biggest things here in Churchill is we evaluate through community assessment, our client satisfaction, and working with our different boards to determine what our next steps are and how to address the issues we come across. When you look at human services across the whole state, there's 17 different models. Nobody looks the same. So what I show you today is Churchill. This does not look like Lyon or anyone else. But again, it really is based off of the statutes that we do have to proceed with. Here in Churchill, we are based a lot on grant funding. We are looking at the priorities, finding funding that meets those priorities, and then trying to obtain that. I don't know if I can change this. There we are. So with Nevada by statute, we have 428, which is really that indigent person. We have our healthcare under 439B. And then also, we have the inmate medical boards of health, public guardianship, county hospital is only in Clark. And then there's just other pieces that kind of fall to direct us where we're going to administer. When you look at 2011, we received these additional assessments. And I'll say, you know, we have great working relationships with the state. We use NACO, and we have a legislative committee through our human service administrators that really look at how we can keep our costs down, how do we work better for our community? And when there are reimbursements such as the IAF, how do we bring those back to our community to be utilized, what our priorities are. But in 2011, I call it the bad year. It was when we really got hit with the additional waivers with the Medicaid match. You had more consumer health. There was more with the STD and developmental services. So we've really been reevaluating with all of our communities, how can we provide more services based off the goals of our community at a less restrict, a less amount, excuse me. So when you look at where our funding comes from, we have the 1.5 cents indigent accident fund. This is those that IAF that we talk about so much that in 2011, in 2013, excuse me, had the huge change with Affordable Care Act. Where do these funds go? So when you're talking about receiving your reimbursement of a little over $200,000, these are funds that are being redirected back to help us offset costs that we're having to pay towards us. One of the unique things about this, and this is something I had never seen before, and it was very exciting, is those funds now can be put back into our budgets to provide indigent care for the priorities in our community, which when I give you our outline for Churchill, you'll see how we've really utilized those. You have the one set, sub-fund, and then you have your mandated levies, your six to 10 cents for indigent services. And some of us have others. I have a social services fund, and I also now have a senior tax fund. There we go. When you look at 428, it's pretty simple. It's for indigent persons. It's really providing care to the indigent and making sure they're not falling through those gaps. You can define indigent more in depth than they do in statute. When I started here in 2002, it was really determined that we were keeping at the $438 per person. If you made less than that, you are considered indigent. We have reevaluated that since the healthcare reform, and so that we can provide more services to those so they're not falling through Really, it's the duty of the county to provide aid and relief to the indigent. That's medical and financial assistance. When you really look at the duty of the county, really commissioners establish and approve those standards. They prescribe a uniform and standard of eligibility, appropriate money for the purpose, and appoint agents who will develop regulations and administer these programs. And I think that's what you're really looking at doing today. You'll have that director that can bring these forward to you. When you dive into healthcare, it's care for indigent patients. When you look at within most of our communities, we do partner with the state of Nevada for the Community Health Nurse Office, which is providing a lot of those services. You'll see in my presentation here in a moment how we are changing that so that we can be more of a county assistance program. When you look at safety net services, you always want to make sure you're the pair of last resort. So it's a huge portion with your federal, state, and community partnerships so they understand. If there's another program in your community, it's really looking, maybe they should utilize that prior to coming to a service such as our indigent. We do service model transition where you're taking, we used to just provide those emergency services. Here's $200 a year. This will help you pay your rent, and then you're able to come back next year. Really, over the years, it's gone from providing that emergency payment to how can we help you so you're not in this situation in the future, and really reducing those super utilizers. And then it's your local experience. What is in your community that can help wrap around services to keep individuals from falling through those cracks and coming back for more need? So when you look at really developing any plan, these are a list of people that we try to always include, because it seems like you may be working on emergency rent, but when you look at the substance abuse issues that you have in your community, really, where is that balance? Where are the fundings going? Is there a high amount of substance abuse? We need to treat the substance abuse before we're really working on that housing situation. These all work together. When we evaluate these, we're really looking at community, the mandated services, preventative programs, and then really that balance of the county responsibility with the statute and the taxpayers. That is the biggest, is always finding that balance. So when you look at Churchill County, 2002 and prior, we had 2.5 individuals working here. We had a director. We had an intake, which was also our reception, and we had a .5 project coordinator. That .5 project coordinator was grant funded. It was one of the welfare to work programs that got funded, and they were utilizing them to do some data. They were doing special projects such as our wishing tree Christmas program. And at that time, we had a food pantry. We provided emergency assistance up to one time per year. It was $200. Rent utilities, utility deposits. We did indigent care, burial, long-term care, and RX assistance. Those things really did change when the legislation changed in affordable healthcare. At that time, our funding really was our county tax revenue, community services block grant, welfare set aside, and emergency solutions grant. Back in the day, it was called emergency shelter grant. When I came on board in 2003, really, it was the time that we were starting to address a lot of the homeless and housing issues. At that time, I was brought on as another full-time individual, and it was funded 100% by HUD and the State Housing Trust Funds. At this time, it was really looking at how do we take somebody from the streets, and we're putting them into housing, wrapping those services around them, and making them more successful and an actual member of our community. We've always kept the stance that we do not provide housing, we do not provide services to those that are not county residents or have the intent to reside per statute. Because we do, we want to provide services to our community. In 2003, our Board was very concerned, you build it, they shall come. But with sticking with those with our guidelines of truly, you do have to be a county resident, it has kept our numbers down. In 2008, this is when we started really making the transition to not provide emergency services anymore. We found with our homeless program, we were extremely successful with getting people placed, addressing their underlying issues to maintain them in a stable environment. So we launched our stabilization program. So we are no longer an emergency service, but we went to $1,000 a year, and you were a part of full case management. So now you're really evaluating all underlying conditions. We expanded with a couple more funding sources so that we could make sure and offset this. As you can see at the top, we have five FTE and how really we were funding those. 2011, here, we started really looking at how do we expand more funding, and we became the Family Resource Center. So not only is Churchill County Social Services the community action agency, which is a federal state designation, but we're also the Family Resource Center. So now we're also that intake and referral. This is something we had been doing. We just weren't getting really funding to support it. As the FRC, which previously was at the school district, and now we're getting funding to support the additional impacts. 2015, this is when it really came about with guardianship. We had previously had a contracted guardian here, and I was the deputy. We found with the Board evaluating and with the District Attorney's Office, there was concerns about the liability. So at that time, I became also the public guardian. I have a unique situation here in Churchill with our guardianship. We work very closely with our public administrator, but they are elected. One of the things we looked at with my protected people when they pass, usually they are, they have less than $2,000. So they're truly in that indigent frame. So we have an arrangement that if my individual passes and they have less than 2,000 of assets, I also administer that estate. The court provides that court appointment to do that for that case. If they're over, then they are going to the public administrator, and we're working with them to pass all assets and for him to do the final closings. So that was the big piece, really, when you look at guardianship. Any community can very look, look very differently based on their cases. We have been fortunate, and I'm going to knock on wood, that we stay about 13 active protected individuals. It's kind of sad. We'll lose a couple individuals, and we have more cases coming behind them. But it's really looking at how do we partner with everyone in the community to keep them safe. This individual is required to be on call and able to respond 24/7. So when we looked at this at the time, I just had a guardianship assistant. We did not actually appoint a deputy until later on. So in 2018, now I'm still the public guardian. We still have the assistant, but we expanded more of our grant funds. Really, we wanted to look at the issues that are causing our guardianship. Why are individuals not able to stay safe in their home? What are the issues that our jails are filling up faster? We started really reviewing our behavioral health efforts and coordination. We started providing some funding I had within my tax revenue funds for partners so that they could expand some outreach services and service coordination, including FAST, which is a case management program within the jail system. We found this to be extremely successful in the fact that now you don't have the reoffense. We had a huge reduction, and we've maintained that reduction, of the reoffenders. We also had where we put outreach workers in the community. A lot of the guardianship referrals we're receiving, truly, they did not need a guardian, they needed supports. So we put together a program and modeled it to really look and see if we were to wrap services around somebody in the community that was falling through the cracks, could we maintain independent living, keep them out of the facilities, and also keep them safe? This was extremely successful with victims of crime funds, and that's how we really evaluated this program. We were working with our Churchill Community Coalition. They were receiving the funds as a pass-through from us, so that we were not building such a large office. You know, capacity is huge. We want a capacity of the community, not just of our agency. But in 2019, we found that the program was going too fast. There was much more need than we had ever predicted, and it was extremely successful. So is what we did was expand that program, and we received an additional funding from ADSD. And we brought the program in-house. We found that smaller nonprofits at times can struggle to keep up with the need. So as you see, we went to 10 full-time equivalents and really expanded out our outreach program. We found we had less need in our emergen, well, our stabilization program, we were getting less referrals for guardianship. And also, we were linking people to those behavioral health supports that were truly needed to keep them safe. 2020, that's a whole different world. We not only maintained our programming, but it was found on May 1 of 2020 for us actually to step into become a health department. Under emergency order, it was found that truly our community health nurse and the state could not respond within our community. So they provided us the funding to move forward with the actual health department also. So our department grew quite a lot, and we continue with that. Our goal now is we do look at having three different divisions, because we do not want to cross over what our goals are within social services, which we're calling essential services, with truly those health needs, and with our guardianship. And then the next step is we did, we have launched our life center, which is our senior services. With all of this, it came funding. You're about 50% of our staff are covered at least 75% by some grant funding. I'm a huge believer in having a mixed formula for all staff. If you have a reduction in one grant, the other one can usually come in and pick it up, or it's a very small amount from the county picking up by for you to find another resource. Because one of the biggest things I found is you don't want to start a program, have great need, and then not have the funding to support and be able to serve those that are coming to the door. One of our largest funders is ADSD, in which is working on the independent living. And 2021, this is scary, and this is not something to scare the Board here, but this is really looking with the addition of the health department. We are looking at starting a health district. The goal is by October of 2023, we will be a district of up to four counties. So that's why you're seeing that staff increase to 35 full-time equivalent that are on staff here now. Additionally, we had to take over the operations of the Life Center, which is our senior center here, July 1 of 2021. That did come under the structure here at Social Services. But one of the things is, it was a unique opportunity, because we were having more need for our disabled and our seniors, it has allowed us to really configure those different programs together to work with our essential services, our health department. So now we actually even have a clinic there. This is allowed for not necessarily growth, but actually to provide those services that there was huge gaps. We were waiting for the state to provide us a health program for our seniors. Now we've been able to launch those things. So we will have our Aging and Disabilities Division also. And with that, you can kind of see where we went. We started in 2002. We had approximately $300,000 in grant funding, and as of 2021, we're at 7.5 million this year that we'll be moving forward with. We have not increased our tax allocation from indigent care. Those have maintained the same since the beginning. We look at grant funds to support those, our special allocations from partners. And if I can answer questions, I wanted to be quick. I know you guys are having a long day, but I'm here to answer anything that you might have.
Have any questions?
That's drinking out of a fire hose, isn't it?
Shannon, what's there?
This Commissioner Tipton. Shannon, obviously, in 2002, when you started this program and you had two people, I think, wasn't it, you had two and a half full-time employees, you probably had an office somewhere you where you could, you were stepped into. And but now, when you get to 35 and a half, I mean, how many million dollars did it cost to build the building to house all those people?
We have not built any further buildings. The building that we started in in 2002 really was, it's our hospital, it was a physician's center off the hospital, that the county took over now that is attached to admin. We just took down office space is what we were able to do with the 30 We just took down office space is what we were able to do with the thirty-five with this huge expansion this year is really look at how do we utilize the partners that were in this building in other locations we have? In July of two thousand twenty-one, when we took over the life center, that was a building that had been constructed with Churchill County partnership with the city, and then also the Pennington, that William and Pennington Fund. That building, I believe, was about nine million dollars, and that happened a few years ago. So I just moved people, where is the need? We actually have an office at the library for our outreach workers because we find, we have homeless that come there, that's the best time to be talking to them. You're starting to see people when they are stressed sometimes at the library. We have an office at the hospital here. If they have somebody that's admitted that needs care when they leave, how do we wrap those services so they don't end up back in the hospital? So we're just kind of, we're out everywhere. The health one is the hardest because of the COVID response. We do have a full site there that we're using temporarily, and we have a small office here. Got that answered?
Welcome.
Any other questions?
Shannon, what is the population, current population that you're dealing with for the county and the city, or any area that you cover?
So we're just under twenty-six thousand here in Churchill County. We provide services as far out as Cold Spring Station, Hazen, and then to Trinity.
Is that population included in what, in the twenty-six thousand?
Yes, that is fully. Our population is very unique, that is our ongoing residents. As you know, we do have the airbase here, which can cause fluctuation. They're not residents, permanent residents here, but at times we have to provide those services based on the fact that they do have a lease in the community. But we do coordinate with the base to obtain funding to help if somebody is in crisis. Plus, we do have the tribe. The tribe, we, we don't necessarily go out there and provide a service, but they are always able to come to us to obtain services. So it's another coordination and a huge partnership to make sure that we are the last funding of resort.
Thank you. Any others?
Okay, thank you, Shannon, I appreciate it. It's a very robust program, and it, I think, gives us a, this is definitely a foundation and the direction that we're probably going to be looking toward in the, in the future, so.
Shannon, I have a question, this is Abel, DRL now Assistant County Manager, HR Director for purposes of the record. Which are, who are the four counties that are part of your health district?
So right now, we're just going through the actual evaluation and the planning to see who would be in the final district. But we are working with Pershing, Mineral, and Eureka. Currently, we're providing services in Mineral County, and we'll start providing services in Eureka County in February as a COVID response. And that's really, it's an evaluation process. We have also started, you kind of saw on my list, I have now a laboratory scientist because we are building a lab. We should have our full certification within the next forty-five days. So we'll be collecting samples and also processing here also. But the health district is, it's, it's a game changer and really looking at how services are provided in the future from environmental health, public health, to community health, and that's what we're evaluating now.
Very impressive. And also, I think that what really caught my attention was how you've been able to, you know, you have that seven point five million you're working with without having to have raised taxes in that initial fund. I think that, that's like a testament to your work over there and watching out for the taxpayers.
Ultimately, that's the goal, it's really finding the fund. You know, a lot of people will look for grant funds and say, oh, we could build a program for this. We have always our strategies that we're looking at where we have what we call a part, a community partnership here, and we meet quarterly and just have coffee. And it's about seventy-four members. They, anybody that provides a service here in Churchill County is welcome to come to the meeting. And it's talking about what is our demographics, how are they changing? What are the gaps we're seeing? We try to really look at not duplicating any service. When I first did our evaluation in two thousand and five, we found we had eight food pantries, and we were one of them. And it was like, wait a minute, let's step back, it's just the youth that are not receiving food. So we provided funding from a grant source to help somebody build their capacity to serve the kids rather than us duplicating that. And that's the biggest thing. Within our department, we found that we even had, went through times where our grant funds were getting to be able to support a lot more of our staffing. So we were able to redirect a portion of our taxes to help start the senior services, which was a nonprofit. So we're always looking at ways not to touch the county budget. How do we really build and create these things for the need based off the funding available at federal and state levels?
Great. Mr. Chair, I've just got a couple of comments, thank you, Shannon. Really appreciate your input on that. You know, I, I want to make sure to assure the commissioners, and I hope you reciprocate this. I'm not looking to have a thirty-five employee department. We, we're not ready for that, and number one. Number two, we are, we are feeling anxious just about a two-person department and developing that just because we have so many things going on. But certainly, I think what Shannon has provided here is a sort of a blueprint for how you go down the road eventually as you identify particular issues as they arise. And I think that's great, and Shannon, as we already have, will, will rely on you and lean on you to gather information as we go down that road. We really, really appreciate you. But again, I, I think what I want to make sure we understand is our first goal is to make sure we continue our indigent services issues and then get to our public guardian as quickly as we possibly can. And then once we have those two things in place, let it roll for a couple, two or three years, and make adjustments along the way. But it really starts with hiring the director position because that individual, just like Shannon did, that individual is going to set the tone for what the organization looks like, how we function, what our strategies are. Obviously, with the input, just like Shannon said, of the community as a whole, but specifically the DA's office, you know, right now the clerk's office, eventually that'll be out of the loop. You know, some of the work that the courts do with drug abuse and alcohol abuse, that kind of thing. And the good news for Winamaka from my perspective is we already have some of the same things that Shannon's talking about. We have a family support center. You know, they work on their own to raise funds to provide services. We have the Frontier Community Coalition. They work on many fronts to help all of these same type of people. So we have organizations that are in place. What our, what our job needs to be, and Nikki's been doing this in her current position, is to coordinate with all those activities to make sure that we're, you know, we're utilizing this in an optimized way in our community, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you, Shannon, for, for that information, it was very helpful. I, I see that your title is Director and Public Guardian. And now, in two thousand twenty-one, you have an Assistant Public Guardian, I saw on the list. Did, was that because you found it difficult to do both jobs? And was it difficult?
Yes, I've had an assistant since two thousand and eight. We actually named a Deputy Public Guardian in two thousand twenty-one, because it is. When you really look at guardianship, you're everything to one person. The DA's office provides us legal support, but we write all of our own petitions. We attend court with the DA's office. You're getting calls for individuals, they may need emergency care in the middle of the night. You're getting them transported, you're overseeing all their assets. So it's, it's a huge job, and it is twenty-four seven. It's, you don't get to take a break, you have to have someone answer that phone at all times because you're making all decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Abel, do you have anything else you wanted to add to this item?
No, no, I don't. I think, Shan, thank you again very much for making the time. I know it was short notice last week, but we really appreciate you and, and the good work you're doing for your community and the state as a whole.
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate you inviting me. This was not meant to scare you. Definitely, our board is involved in everything, and we don't have as many nonprofits as you do. You're very fortunate. But this is just how we've been able to respond to the different issues, and we are here for anything we can help you with.
Sure, thanks again, we sure appreciate your help.
Thanks, Shannon.
I, I think that was a great point she just made. You know, we have all these nonprofits, so it's not to say that in ten, twenty years, our human services function is going to look like Churchill County's. It might be completely different. We just have to work with what we have right now and develop that and enhance that as well. So.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just, it was kind of interesting when she, just touching on the number of protected persons, virtually the same. She said twelve, thirteen folks, and that's where we've been running here, and in our population sixteen thousand versus twenty-four, twenty-five. So that, that, the need for that work. The, the, my earlier comments, and, and I guess if you saw a sense of frustration, it plainly is there. The discussion has been always, from my standpoint, public administrator and public guardian. Those, those items have historically never been separated here in Humboldt County, at least in the last forty or some odd years that I'm aware of. I honestly can't tell you how far back those two have been combined. The, the real work is in the public guardian, but, but a lot of the, and, and the public administrator work often is, is just an extension of those cases roll over, when, when the protected person passes, it rolls over. Some of those folks don't have any assets, very minimal work. Others, they do have assets and there is more probate. The public administrator, however, has performed probate work for estates when there has been no public guardian initially. And that's, and that's what required us to go out and clear properties or apartments and the like. And, and that's where, and I, and I indicated before, it doesn't happen that often, maybe once every year or two, we, we spend whatever it takes to muck out a house. Like I said, I, I've always taken the position, I don't think that we can farm that out because of, of, like I said, my one example of, of the cash that was found in Motorhome. And so, I mean, those, those are those functions. All along, the DA's office request and intent is to just focus on legal work. Legal work to support the public minister and public guardian, human services, this board and the like, and not perform functions outside of legal work. But with that, I, you know, I'd ask for some direction. If, if the court, or I mean, if the commission is, is inclined to separate those two for the first time in decades, please let us know. I think we need some direction on, on how to proceed. But my request has always been to remove the day-to-day functions of the public guardian and public administrator out of the DA's office.
I. Go ahead.
So Abel, with the, with that revelation, I guess, you gave us a, a salary range for a public guardian. Now that, if that person, I'm assuming that's what we're still looking at. If we're going to be looking at an administrator guardian combined, are we going to be looking at a larger salary going to change?
That, that would depend, and.
I would say no.
Yeah, I would agree, that's no.
Okay.
I mean, that was the plan all along, was to do what the DA said. You know, in doing some research, just to clarify, there, we got concerned about a couple of things because we were worried about if, if that individual was expected to go to court, then geez, would they really be the right person to do it? It's my sense that no, they wouldn't. That would be one of those things we hand off to the DA, pretty simple. So all I'm saying here, all we're saying, I think, is that we just need to do some clarification on the job description to make sure that we understand what those, you know, where that line is and what are those possible areas where, yeah, they can be in a probate court possibly if that individual is, you know, skilled and can do that kind of work. Or if it's not, we can always rely on the, the DA's office to assist with that. So I think we can work that, it's not an issue, it's just a matter of clarification.
No, and, and my position has always been that we would provide the legal services, unless it's a really large administration case or even guardianship case for that matter. It's not unusual historically for, for outside counsel to assist the public administrator beyond the public, or the district attorney. But, but by no means, the first level of legal services on, on your, you know, average or vast majority of all guardianship administration cases would be performed by the district attorney. We would incorporate that, and the plan was to incorporate that in the ordinance that we would be drafting. So that's, that's the direction that I'm asking for. It's more that it's the day-to-day functions outside of the actual legal work.
Well, it seemed to me that, Mr. Commissioner French, it would seem to me, I'll, I'll back up. It was my understanding that, not fully understanding the duties of the administrator versus guardian, you know, right down to the minutia. But my understanding and listening to the request from the district attorney initially was just exactly what he described, to, to pull those responsibilities out of that office, period. What, what we have to do, and I, and I'm, my sense is, is that I think we're all kind of on the same page with that. And I think ultimately what we need to do is, is figure out what the trigger looks like in terms of when we request assistance from the district attorney's office and, and under what circumstances. And then everything else that doesn't fall behind that trigger is going to be part, part of the duties.
Well, we, we would be providing ongoing assistance to this office, just like we do any other office.
Sure.
I mean, that, so the, the Human Services Director would call up and say, I've got a question. What's, what, what do we need to do with this guardianship? Or, well, we've got to file a petition, or is there somebody, a family member that can take over? I mean, that, that is a function that we already occur, it's not a triggering event. We will be providing legal services, whether it's in the court or out. The DA's office will be providing that legal service.
Okay, so maybe the word trigger is probably the wrong word to use. But I'm wondering, you know, just to make sure that the, that the expectations are basically the same. You know, that, that, that there aren't a, there isn't a block of, of duties that the Human Services Director thinks would fall back on the district attorney still. I think we need to make sure that that, you know, we clarify that. And I think we tried to do that, so.
Yeah, and I think that we've gone all along generally, knowing that was the case, that we would. Because if you think about it, the district attorney handles the case today, right? From start to finish, whatever the need is. And so, as Mr. McDonald said, what we're talking about here is moving the vast majority of that work over to the public guardian. And so, but there will still be things where the DA will have to handle, and that will just require, just like he said, communication between the, the department head and the DA's offices to, you know. In most cases, they're going to know exactly what they need to do and what the process is. But if there's any questions, you make a phone call and you try to figure out what's next.
Okay.
I don't really see it as a big issue.
I think we're okay then.
That's, that's my feeling on it.
Yeah.
So I think this goes back to the differences between the counties. You know, where we were really modeling our, at least our initial approach to mirror Churchill County's as far as public guardianship and the human services aspect of it. But they did, you know, mention that their public administrator is, I think, elected or appointed. They have, they have somebody separate, whereas our case is unique. And so, it's perhaps maybe a matter of us, like I mentioned earlier, modeling our approach to what fits our, our needs. Yep. And clarifying those, those aspects. You know, she did mention something about working with, I think, assets of less than two thousand dollars. So maybe understanding those. So maybe understanding those parameters and how they work over there and seeing how maybe they would work here, maybe tweaking some of those. They have the administrative aspects, I think, down after all these years. It's maybe, maybe something we could borrow from, not necessarily copy, but use as a template.
Abel, you gave us a chart the other day on the human services director and the deputy public guardian. The 87,106 was for Nikki and you're proposing 121,648 for a new person. Is that what this chart shows?
Which chart?
It was on January 18th.
Oh, I, I don't have that information in front of me. Do you have that information I could borrow to look at?
I can, I can pull it up.
Thank you.
I just didn't know why the difference in the, in the cost factors.
Sure, absolutely.
What, what did, what's this one going to do that Nikki didn't do?
It's a director-level position with much more responsibilities. We could argue that in some cases, perhaps Nikki Lynn was working out of class and maybe was doing, because her, her role right now is, I think, administrative specialist. Is that correct? And so taking the opportunity with her resignation is, and what we worked towards was establishing a formal position based on the duties the county needs to be performed, which are director-level positions. And so based on that, a compensation study was done to determine what is the adequate wage for the position and the expectations of the county for that position going forward after Nikki retires. So that's why the compensation is different. It's in line with the market rate for what we expect the position's duties to be in.
Per hour, what would you expect that to be? You have no idea?
Yeah, I can break that down. I just need a calculator.
I broke it down for us and it's $58.49 an hour, based on a 40-hour week.
That seems like it might be about right, as would be perhaps other director-level positions as well.
I, I can't phantom that, that the human services director would be that much better, that much wiser, that much, you know, more intellectual than Nikki was. I mean, she worked herself into a tizzy over this thing, trying to do the job and, and cover it, you know, 24 hours a day.
I think it's important to also note that we're adding the public guardian aspect of it as well, and that's not something that's currently done by that.
And we will also be adding an employee. Nikki is not currently a supervisor of an employee. She doesn't handle any of those duties as well.
So you have 66,666 for the, for the guardian.
It's not what I have. It's what the market has determined for the rates.
This is what you presented to us.
Yeah, it's what I presented based on my study.
Okay. This is what you brought to us. It just blows me away that one person would be that much more. So I just need some, you know, Commissioner Tipton just said, well, and, and the county clerk just said, well, it's a difference between a supervisor and an employee. You know, that, that's a whole lot, but.
Well, I think.
I don't know. I just had time to go over these things. You threw them at us, said, here, this is what we want to do. I was really surprised that Mike came up with, you know, some in this, and I'm just wondering if, if we shouldn't get together, whoever's going to handle it on the manager's side and the DA's side, and put this thing together better so that we're not having these, these discussions, especially in a, in a commissioner's room. You know, this thing should be, be figured out ahead of time. Are you, I mean, are you comfortable with the way they presented it?
Well, I mean, other than those initial remarks and, and based on, on, on these later comments and my question of, you know, do you want to separate out the public administration? We can proceed and put together a, a draft ordinance for you to consider. We, I, I would, could see that also including revised or modified job descriptions. Abel commented earlier that, you know, we've, I know that was presented at the beginning of January, but I think since then, he's noted some items that, that maybe we need some further definition or clarification on and, and I would agree, not only from, from the county manager or HR standpoint, but from, from the clerk's office or, or DA's office alike. I, I, I think we can continue to put, put this together and in front of you. I, I, I do believe that we will be conducting some meetings outside of the presence of the county commission, but I think it's important for the board to be involved with some of these more conceptual or, or policy-type decisions or discussions, that do you want us to continue down that path or no, push the brakes and stop on that and we're not proceeding? Those are, I think, some of the discussions and, and the, the need that, that Dave and Abel have, have presented as well as, as Tammy has been, and the change to that need has been the fact that Nikki Lynn is retiring very soon. And that, that is a game changer to these discussions. And when, when, when Tammy's saying, you know, it is difficult at best to try and understand what all she's handling and she's, she's completely full and, and with her duties currently, to try and take that on and fill in the gap when Nikki is, is absent is, is difficult, even when Nikki, prior to Nikki's absence or, or retirement. And so that's, that, I think, has added a, a greater sense of urgency. Maybe some of these things haven't been as polished, but I, I believe we, we are prepared and can continue to move forward and, and answer any questions that come up.
Mr. Chair, can I just add a little bit to that? I mean, I think the bottom line here is that, you know, if you want a perfect package wrapped perfectly, it just doesn't exist. I mean, it just doesn't exist because as we, we learned from Shannon, every county's different. We've got nonprofits that do a lot of the current work, so we don't need everything they have, but we, we do, they have a skeleton that we can use. I think there's always going to be clarification. As we go down the road, we realize at some point, well, that doesn't quite work. I don't know what that might be. Then we're going to be huddling up and we're going to say, you know, we'd really need to adjust the job description or the ordinance to handle these situations. I mean, look at our nuisance ordinance today. We've been relying on that forever and it's caused havoc. So now we're looking at changing that. This is no different. When we started the public works department under my tutelage, we had a general idea where we were going to go on, but we didn't have any clue how the hell we were going to support these water systems, sewer systems. We'd never done it before. So you come up with an idea, you put it on paper and you, you go at it and you start finding out what the actual situation is on the ground and you deal with it. And so we're going to be fine. We don't, you, you can put a whole bunch of structure and a whole bunch of issues around it, have this beautiful document of, but in the end, it's what's happening on the ground. What do we need to do? And that's why I told you the story of Nikki, you know, and asking her, what do you do every day so that we can develop it? It was kind of that point, Commissioner Haas. I really wanted to know, what do you do every day? What are we going to tell this person to do when you're gone? And again, she laughed at me because it's, it ranges from the most bizarre thing you've ever heard to mundane, day-to-day, all night long, middle of the night. You, you really can't say exactly what it is. I mean, you have a sense and I think that's why we want to get somebody on board so they can at least, she can run through probably, you know, 20, 40 scenarios that are happening and she can help them to identify that and set some policies around that. But in the end, we just have to get out on the ground. I mean, here's another one. We're going to be talking about mosquitoes here in a minute and we're have to, you know, potentially come up with a new way to do that. There's big challenges, but there's no easy answers and it's hard to package them perfectly. So, you know, and I, I want to comment, Commissioner Haas, as, as respect to the, the money. We've talked about this three or four times now. For months and a year, we've talked about this. And the fact of the matter is.